Good evening. We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Do we have a closed session report, Mr. City Attorney?
There's nothing to re- nothing.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. And Mr. City Attorney, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
It'd be my honor. All right, ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the city attorney does have a name. His name is David Kasseres.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Litzter, here. Councilmember Luvenos, here. Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
We welcome you to the Simi Valley City Council meeting. We're excited that the state fully reopened last week, allowing businesses to return to usual operations. Simi Valley businesses need your support as they continue to recover from the pandemic, so please support them as much as possible. We're also excited about the new mask mandates from the state. Unfortunately, the mask mandates for the public are slightly different from those that apply to employers. The city is taking the necessary steps to comply with the state OSHA mask requirements, which necessitates we stay virtual for this meeting. The city council will hold this meeting virtually, as we have for over a year, but there are still opportunities for the public to participate in this council meeting. The public statements are received via Zoom. As noted on the agenda, the public was encouraged to register no later than 3:30 PM today if they wish to speak via Zoom. Written comment are also accepted by email. Those emails have already been provided to the city council, however, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening.
The city thanks you for your patience. The city continues to provide opportunities for the public to participate in the business of the city and for their voices to be heard. With that said, we can move on with the meeting tonight, and I would like to say that all indications are that our next meeting, which will be July 26, we will be having the meeting in public if everything goes according to plan. So we look forward to that happening. Time for agenda review. Is there any items that any council member wants to address? Agenda, okay.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second. Motion second, call for the vote. Declaration of conflict?
The motion passes unanimously.
Declaration of conflict is our next item. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Do we have anybody that wants to recuse themselves from any item? Okay. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, certificates of appreciation to outgoing youth council members, and Kristin Tignak is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. This evening, we are recognizing 14 youth council or outgoing youth council members. These individuals have contributed their time and exemplary service on the advisory board to the city council on youth-related matters. Although these individuals were unable to be present this evening due to COVID-19 restrictions, they are watching safely from their homes and will receive their certificates of appreciation via mail. I'm excited to announce that six of our graduating seniors have plans to attend the following colleges this fall: Duke University, Moore Park College, UC Berkeley, UC Riverside, and USC. Please join me in congratulating our following outgoing youth council members: Thane Maury Anad, Jasmine Esmile, Madeline Herser, Shanti- sorry, Shanchita Kartik, Ashley Kilnic, Monish Meany, Ria Manamaran, Zainab Nimaachwala, Anna Soverensen, Priyank Srinivasan, Munishka Vanwani, Vivek Tarpara, Maya Tauber, Peter Wang. To all of these amazing individuals watching from home, I wish you all the very best and want to let you know that it has been a true honor to work with each and every one of you this year.
And thank you very much, and congratulations from the council, and best of luck in the future. And I sure wish they could be here in person, but we're almost there. We're almost there, and I'm sure they don't want to delay their graduation to wait to be here in public, so. But congratulations and best of luck.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 2, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 3A1, reappointment of trustee judge to serve on the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees and adoption of a resolution, and Kelly Tinker is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Library Board President Mashburn and Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees. In 2012, the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees established the initial terms of office for the board with three-year terms of service for each trustee. The term of trustee Mike Judge is scheduled to expire on June 30, 2021. Therefore, it is recommended that the board adopt a resolution to reappoint trustee Mike Judge to the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2021, and expiring June 30, 2024. No other board positions are expiring this year. This concludes the report, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I'm willing to make a motion.
Sure.
I move to adopt resolution number 20202122, reappointing trustee judge to serve on the Simi Valley Library Board of Trustees for an additional term from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024. Second.
Motion is second. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 3A2, appointment of youth council members, and Kristin Tignak is here for this presentation as well.
Hello again. The Simi Valley Youth Council was established in 1970 as an advisory board to the city council on youth-related issues and consists of 21 members and up to three alternates in grades 7 through 12. Youth council members' terms of office expire on June 30 of each year. A recruitment to fill the 24 youth council positions was initiated on March 1 and concluded on May 21. A total of 62 applications were received, though two of those applications were received after the deadline. Interview panels met on May 27, June 8, and June 9 to interview the applicants. The interview panels nominated 19 applicants for youth council membership and three applicants for the youth council alternate positions. No applications were received from students from Apollo High School or Hillside Middle School. A recruitment for these two vacant positions will be initiated when school resumes in August. The following youth council applicants have been nominated for appointment, representing Royal High School, Ella McCrossan and Rika Tignak; representing Santa Susanna High School, Sumaya Akbar and Abhishek Jagannathan; representing Simi Valley High School, Joshua Chandran and Ashlyn Rowe; representing Sinaloa Middle School, Jordan Downey; representing Valley View Middle School, Sadie Rowe; representing the community at large, Mateos Broke, Hayden Kelly, Rashi Kandara, Krish Kotia, Rahul Naveen, Ian Nelson, Aniri Pillai, Calissa Rowe, Jacob Peter Salvanera, Alden Ta, Isaac Tu, and as alternates, Ro Heath Sajju, Ming Sen Deng, and Ming Wang Li. It is recommended that the city council authorize and the mayor appoint the 22 applicants nominated to serve one-year terms on the Simi Valley Youth Council commencing July 1, 2021, and concluding on June 30, 2022. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer any questions at this time.
All right, comments?
I would just like to make comment. If I'm not mistaken, is this the largest pool of applicants with 60 applications? Is that one of the largest we've had in the past?
Not the largest, but it's one of our higher.
One of our- I just want to commend the- all of those who applied and the applicants certainly who were selected because that shows wonderful interest with our youth and wonderful willingness to sh- serve. That was- thank you.
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes.
It seems we- I see this on an annual basis. We seem to have issues recruiting for Hillside and Apollo, and I know that, you know, Apollo's our continuation high school and Hillside is our magnet middle school. And I'm wondering if there's, you know, I don't like waiting until September is when we're going to start recruiting again, or August?
August.
Is there other ways that we can outreach to those schools? Because this seems to be every year that we seem to be lacking, and then I feel like they miss out on all the summer activities that youth council does and the committees and everything.
Right. Well, with Apollo, they usually have an issue with students not really knowing if they're going to be going to Apollo until right before school starts, because they do try and have them return to their main schools. So that one tends to be where we work with the counselor and we get them. Usually, we- usually, I know last it was a student from Valley- no, Sinaloa. And they were able to attend the orientation meetings. They just weren't appointed yet. So it depends on how quickly we can get the word out, but we try and get all that information out right when school starts, and then there's a week or two before the first meeting.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, you know, I hate them missing out on all the summer activities, so maybe reaching out to some of the youth groups and in our faith communities, that might be a good way to recruit.
May I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I move to authorize and the mayor appoint the 22 applicants nominated to serve one-year terms on the Simi Valley Youth Council commencing on July 1, 2021, and concluding on June 30, 2022.
Second.
You have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 3A3, nomination of representatives to serve on the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District Advisory Committee, and Kelly Tinker is also here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The city council is responsible for the nomination of a representative to serve on the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District Advisory Committee. The committee provides the APCD board with recommendations on rule actions and general air quality issues pertinent to the county. The term of the city's current representative expired on January 5, 2021, but serves until a replacement is appointed. On June 2, 2021, Mayor Mashburn and councilmember Judge interviewed the applicants, one of which is being recommended for nomination to the committee this evening. Staff is recommending that the city council nominate Mr. Rainford Hunter as the city's representative to serve on the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District Advisory Committee. This concludes this report, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments?
I have a comment. I just want to say we had two very highly qualified applicants for this position. The first time I've seen that on a board I've sat on for an interview. I mean, their qualifications were immaculate and very, very extensive, and I'm sure we're going to be very happy with the person that we've appointed.
Thank you, and I'd kind of like to echo what councilmember Judge said, that going and asking for applications, I think, was the right move to have us look at the most qualified people, and we had two very qualified applicants, and the one selected, I think everybody will be happy with, but I think it may be a kind of a guide for what we should be doing in the future for many of our positions that we appoint to different committees and boards. So thank you, staff, for your work on that, too, for putting it together, made it very easy for the selection committee to sift through and understand what the qualifications were. So thank you very much for the work done there. Okay, motion?
Be happy to motion. I nominate Mr. Rainford Hunter as the city's representative to the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District Advisory Committee. Second.
Motion and second. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3C1, informational presentation by youth council members, Ria Manamaran, Ella McCrossan, and Rika Tignak.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. My name is Ria Manamaran, and I'm the current youth council chair. I'm happy to report that I will be a freshman at the University of California, Berkeley this fall. Go Bears! And this evening, I'll be joined by youth council members Ella McCrossan, a rising sophomore at Royal High School, and Rika Tignak, a rising junior at Royal High School. We'd like to thank you all for allowing us to represent the youth council. Tonight, we will be providing a recap to our 2020-2021 term that will officially end on June 30. We started off our term by reviewing and making recommendations for the teen crisis resource numbers printed on the back of all SVUSD student ID cards. The online activities committee was formed- that was formed in April 2020 due to COVID-19 stay-at-home orders, worked hard all last summer and through the year, coordinating and hosting a variety of free virtual events that helped us- helped all of us stay connected and have fun while we were socially isolated in our homes. Some of these virtual events included multiple open mic nights, escape rooms, game nights, bingo, and more. My personal favorite was the escape room because the turnout was just- it ended up being more than we could have ever expected, so that was really fun. Early in our term, we developed our 2020-2021 work plan with the following action items. So number one, to address students needing extra help in enhancing their learning due to the fast pace of the six-week curriculum, youth council advocated for the Santa Susanna High School's tutoring program that, at the beginning of the year- of the school year, was available for students at all campuses. Number two, to address general discrimination, youth council voted to plan and coordinate the city's first multicultural festival with the Cultural Arts Center. Number three, to research the issue of homelessness, youth council members received a presentation by Mara Mulch, Deputy Environmental Services Director, on services available for the homeless and the work of the task force on homelessness has done. Number four, to reduce the stress associated with college and the college application process, we recorded our first video podcast with enlightening interviews with a panel of youth council alumni that attend UC Berkeley, UCLA, and USC. Number five, to increase mental health resource awareness in schools, youth council voted to coordinate a suicide prevention campaign, Mental Health Awareness Month Wellness Week, as well as provide helpful stress reduction tips via our social media platforms. From recommendations that came out of discussions during the 2019 and 2020 youth summits, we formed a vaping research and policy recommendation committee to research this issue, look at what other local cities are doing, and review best practices for model ordinances. As part of our research, the youth council partnered with Ventura County Public Health and their survey analytics contractor to conduct a secondhand smoke community opinion poll, and through that, 543 responses were gathered. We had the honor of partnering with many other organizations this term, such as our wonderful public library, where we helped moderate the city's first annual community reads program, Author Talk, with seeds folks, author Paul Fieschman. We also worked closely with the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center on a variety of programs, including our Worth Living For Suicide Prevention Campaign in September with artwork submitted from members of our community, which can still be viewed on the Cultural Arts Center's web art gallery at www.svvac.org. We also assisted the center by setting up displays for the Dia de las Muertes event. In October, we had fun helping the franchise Simi Recreation and Park leadership by distributing candy to little trick-or-treaters during the district's Halloween drive-through event. Also in October, as part of our Stop Bullying campaign, we hosted a virtual screening of the documentary film, A Brave Heart: The Lily Velez Que's Story, followed by a community discussion with one of our amazing Simi Valley Police Department School Resource Officers, Jean Coletto. To end 2020, we coordinated a virtual event- a virtual art event and game night called Community Canvas: A Stroke of Creativity, and also helped the Advent Health Simi Valley Foundation raise money for cancer patients and their families by donating a kindness and peace-themed wreath to auction off in their annual festival trees event. As the social media committee chair, I'm excited to share with all of you the work we've done to increase our social media presence. To kick off the launch of our new @SimivalleyYouthCouncil YouTube channel, we released our first video podcast with a panel of recent youth council alumni about their experiences with the college application process, financial aid and scholarships, and recommendations for rising juniors and seniors. The social media committee has been hard at work all year, developing content for our Instagram via posts and stories. All year, we've had the privilege of highlighting talented teen artists of all types, from artists to bakers to dancers to musicians. We've posted helpful information that has tied into all of our prevention and awareness campaigns, not to mention some fun Flashback Friday posts highlighting previous members and youth council accomplishments. Our @SimivalleyYouthCouncil account currently has over 780 followers. We would love to hit 800 followers by the end of this term, so if you haven't already, please follow us @SimivalleyYouthCouncil on Instagram and Facebook. We also encourage you to view previous videos of events held this spring that we shared with you during our last informational presentation in May, such as all of the multicultural event videos, our wonderful 2021 talent show performances, our guided meditation session for teens uploaded as part of our Wellness Week, plus videos to help students in preparing for college from our Thursday Night with Emma series. In the near future, we will be adding three YouTube videos as part of our 2021 Youth Summit Town Hall, focusing on the topics of mental health and public safety. We would like to thank Mayor Mashburn, councilmember Luvenos, and Dr. Dipmar from Simi Valley High School for answering our questions regarding-
Our next reading will be held on Tuesday, August 17.
On behalf of Ella, Rika, and the rest of our youth council members, I want to thank you again for allowing us the time and opportunity to report on the activities of the youth council. We're available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, first off, thank you for such a fine report, and you ladies have been quite busy, obviously. It's amazing what you've accomplished, and Ria, best of luck as you move on, and thank you for the contribution that you've made to this city. And with that, council members, have any questions?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but if I can make a comment, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to thank the youth council members. You've done a phenomenal job. You all should consider, especially Ella, a position in social media. That could be a full-time position because that's what people are hiring for. But really, everything that you did, you hit on every topic that was impacting our youth, and you did it in- by learning the media, Zooming, Instagramming, Youtubing, doing all the things that you would have done in person, and still bonding with each other and bringing to light issues that are impacting our community. And I'm so, so glad that you were finally able to do the multicultural festival. And I'm so, so glad that you were finally able to do the multicultural festival. I know this was a multi-year goal for you, so thank you for all the work that you do, and good luck to all of you in college, those of you who are going on. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would like to add one more thing. I want to say to Ria, I just want to commend her. She chaired every meeting of the Youth Council, and she was there at the helm, doing a wonderful job, leading the meetings twice a month. And truly, as you said, as we listened to the list, which is abbreviated, it made us all tired, knowing all the work that the youth have done. Really, they've been outstanding during this this time. And so, I just, again, commend all of you. And Ria, you will be missed, but I'm delighted, I believe, that Rika and Ella will be back next year to keep doing great things, if I'm not mistaken. So, we look forward to much more of all that you're doing. So, thank you so much.
Okay. We'll move on to the next subject. Again, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we have no items this evening under special presentation. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the City Clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the City Clerk this evening. All persons who registered by 3:30 p.m. today will be called on to speak during the public testimony for item four for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of the city staff relating to the matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6. Agenda item 4A, a public hearing to consider city-initiated Simi Valley Municipal Code Amendments Z-S-750 to revise portions of Title IX to establish single-room occupancy, SRO, housing unit standards, and requirements in the commercial plan development CPD zoning district and mixed-use MU overlay district. A determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and introduction of an ordinance. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1323 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for Z-S-750, amending portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to establish single-room occupancy, SRO, housing unit standards, and requirements in the commercial plan development CPD zoning district and mixed-use MU overlay district, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. And Sean Gibson is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the City Council. Tonight with me is Principal Planner Claudia Pedrosso and Senior Planner Jennifer Santos. And via Zoom is our consultant from Rincon Consultants, Jerry Hittelman, who participated in this research for the SRO presentation tonight. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hittelman.
Thank you, Sean, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'll start tonight's presentation with some background information regarding proposed single-room occupancy or SRO housing unit regulations. January 13, 2014, the City Council adopted the SRO ordinance to allow them in commercial planned district and mixed-use overlay districts with a conditional use permit. Then in 2019, following the appeal of the first SRO project within the city, the City Council requested that staff review current and potential new development standards. Then on January 13, 2020, the City Council officially initiated the SRO code amendments and provided staff direction to consider adding specific SRO development standards and requirements that are not currently in the code. These include an SRO unit maximum and minimum square footage standard, parking requirement options required requiring a private kitchen and bathroom in each unit, private and community open space requirements, and also onsite management options. Proposed amended SRO definition is that they are a small residential unit with a private bathroom and kitchen facility. The units will be between 250 to 450 square feet in size, consisting of one habitable room and a structure with other similar similar units. Single-room occupancy residential units would help to continue the goal of providing a diverse form of housing within the city by having additional workforce housing opportunities and choice for residents that are just starting out independently. Also, this type of housing is considered critical in helping the city meet the state's required regional housing need assessment numbers. As shown in this slide, SRO units are intended to be more of a micro apartment or studio living situation. These type of units could provide affordable living opportunities for Simi Valley residents. This project is one of the first SRO developments approved by the City Council in March of 2020. Property is located on the northwest corner of Tappo Street and Eileen Street and is within walking distance to many businesses for shopping and employment opportunities, and is also near public transportation. The three-story, 60-acre building includes approximately 400 square feet of living space in each SRO, with private kitchens and bathrooms also within each unit, as well as common areas, including a rooftop deck. This general plan map shows areas in the city that are zoned either commercial plan development or in red, or have the mixed-use overlay zone in brown, where we anticipate SRO projects would be developed. As shown, the red commercial plan development zoned areas are located throughout the city with a good portion consisting of shopping centers. Now, the brown-colored mixed-use overlay zoned areas are located near First Street and Los Angeles Avenue, and also along Tappo Street between Cochran and Los Angeles Avenue. Both of these zoning areas allow SROs with the condition use permit that would require planning commission approval. In October of 2020, staff presented the draft SRO text amendment to all four neighborhood councils. All of the neighborhood councils were supportive of the proposed SO code amendments. However, some board members expressed concern and provided the following recommendations: that occupancy limits be limited to two people per unit, that the units provide or the project provide one parking space per unit, and also require a minimum stay to be more than 30 days in each unit. Proposed code amendments include operational requirements such as, as recommended, rental duration of a minimum of 30 days, also SRO requirements, including a required unit size range of 250 square feet to 450 square feet, one covered and secured bicycle parking space for every three units, an 11-foot-by-27-foot loading zone area for deliveries and shared drive, pickup, drop-off, and that private kitchens and bathrooms be required within units for them to count towards, again, the city's regional housing need assessment numbers. Then on April 22, 2021, the Planning Commission recommended approval with the following amendments. Provide a minimum 30 cubic foot storage closet within the unit or a storage locker within the building, carport, garage, parking area, or an accessory structure. For projects with more than with 10 units or less, a project would have to provide a minimum of 300 square feet of common indoor and/or outdoor recreation area per project, plus 15 square feet per unit for projects that are larger than 10 units, and that the projects provide a security plan if they have more than 16 units. In general, SRO housing units are intended to provide a reasonable housing option for communities. With high housing costs, one of the biggest concerns with developing SROs is the high cost to install and maintain parking. This can ultimately result in higher costs for future residents that would occupy the SRO development. This resulted with staff exploring alternative parking scenarios, starting off with the study of other jurisdictions and their parking requirements, as shown on this table. As shown, the required parking for the surveyed jurisdictions varied significantly from one space per unit to one space per three units, plus guest and employee parking provisions. Locations of future SRO developments are intended to be located near major arterial streets with close access to shopping, employment, and public transportation. At the neighborhood council meetings, parking was a concern, and it was preferred to require one parking space per unit. Planning Commission also recommended to require one parking space per unit. However, as mentioned, parking spaces are costly to install and maintain, and in order to be able to provide more varied styles of housing, as well as different levels of affordability, parking requirements, we feel, should be more flexible. Therefore, as mentioned earlier, both the Planning Commission and the neighborhood councils expressed concerns about staff's proposal of .5 parking spaces per unit. They were concerned that by not providing enough parking for the units, that residents would have to park on the street and sometimes in neighborhood parking lots. However, SROs are meant to be entry-level and workforce housing units that could be placed in existing commercial centers, but not in residential zoning districts, thus providing an opportunity to share parking with the commercial center or adjacent properties if they have a reciprocal parking agreement. Therefore, the main goal is to provide a different type of housing available to the workforce and residents starting out in housing. It is, therefore, the intent of the proposed ordinance to locate SRO developments, again, near major arterials that have close access to shopping, employment, and public transportation. By reducing the parking from one space per unit to half a space or .5 spaces per unit, it would potentially lower the cost, the overall construction cost and land acquisition costs as well, allow these units to have less required parking, provide workforce housing for local job force, create more opportunities for entry-level housing, and increase a variety of housing opportunities for the residents. So, in conclusion, it is recommended that the City Council introduce ordinance number 1323 approving Z-S-750 as recommended by the Planning Commission with one parking space per SRO unit, or, as an alternative, it is recommended that the City Council introduce ordinance number 1323 approving of Z-S-750 with a modified parking requirement of .5 parking spaces per SRO unit. Thank you, and where staff is available for questions.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Do we have questions of staff? Okay. Elaine?
So, let me, I had several questions that came as I read through the report. Let me just, actually, since this is, most of this last was talking about the parking requirement, let me first try to understand. I realize it's Section 9-44.215, if I'm not mistaken, where it lists really what all of these SRO additional requirements are. It states one uncovered parking space per unit. And I guess my question, first of all, is why is parking restricted to uncovered? Why do we have that word? And are we opposed to covered parking? And can we just remove that word so that the developer has the option of covered versus uncovered?
Yeah. The word could be removed. We're not trying to restrict covered parking. In other parts of the code, we talk about uncovered versus covered parking and other parking requirements for other types of projects. But it just clarifies in the overall development code that-
It specifically says this is going, they're required to have uncovered parking. And to me, that that seems like you're limiting them.
And specifically on page 20, 23 of your staff report, the code section does have an asterisk that says specifically parking spaces may be covered or uncovered. So, it is in there. So, either way, the, it's more precise when you say a minimum of one uncovered. You could always build on that. It could be in a parking garage, it could be in individual garages. There's no restriction on covering it.
Okay. So, your point is that that's the minimum?
It's the minimum.
Okay. And so, then that begs the question, yet bicycle parking is required to be covered. Why is, why are bicycles required to be covered? And why not? I, it just, I mean, they're both transportation modes.
That's for theft purposes, just to prevent, that's to prevent any type of theft to occur because it'd be in more of a secure, a secured unit. So, if it has a roof over it or fencing, and still, I mean, it's going to be if, when the applications propose, that the applicant will propose what they're going to be providing for covered parking. Our main concern is that it's just secured, so.
I understand. It just seemed really odd that we wanted to be, that it specifically said uncovered for cars and covered for bikes. I'm just trying to understand why that was the language.
It's probably easier to steal a bike than steal a car.
Yeah. I should point out also that it might not be a building that would be covering it. It could be in those secure bicycle lockers that you see sometimes.
Sure. Well, and I don't know that-
Right. We have several, we have a current project which has bicycle parking rooms where several tenants' bicycles are parked in one secured room with a key fob to access your bicycle.
Well, and all of that's good. I'm just trying to understand where they're both modes of transportation, why? But I'm understanding better. Help me understand, as I read through it, there are no requirements for guest parking at any time. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
Right. Is that typical? I mean, for other, for everything else, there's usually some allowance for guest parking, but is that correct? Of some modicum, but not with SROs? Is that?
So, the point of the SROs is for it to be an entry-level type of apartment, a-
Understood.
-micro apartment unit.
Understood.
So, you are not going to have all the, all the amenities that a full apartment will have, hence the lower price range for these SRO units. So, something has to be compromised, usually parking, you know, costs money. We do have a requirement for, like, the manager on site to have a parking, but not for guest parking, and for five units, plus one parking space per five units. So, we do have a minimum requirement over there, but it's not like the typical that you see in an apartment building because it is not to be a full apartment building. It's supposed to be more entry-level studios, micro apartment.
I understand. I'm sorry. So, what are you saying, the minimum for five units?
I'm sorry. I meant to clarify. We do require one guest parking space for every five units.
Okay. In the, for the SRO, that, okay. Thank you. And I, as I read through the neighborhood council reports, I understand, here's what I was trying to understand. They asked about restricting the number of occupants, and I believe the response that was given to them is that that cannot be placed in the code. Is that correct? But that it is, can be articulated by maybe the covenants of the actual facility?
Yeah. It makes it difficult to enforce that because of fair housing law, especially if you have a couple that moves in and they have a baby, they, you know, it's so gray.
Sure.
That's where it's kind of- That's where it's kinda, that's managed on, that would be managed as a private, privately.
And so I guess my, and that makes sense. And I guess my question is, as I read through the report of other cities, and how they have restricted or allocated parking, basically, they would say, okay, if it's a two-unit SRO or two-person SRO, it could be parking of one point two or whatever. If it is a one-person SRO, it'd be point eight or whatever, I'm just throwing out numbers. But basically, it looked to me as if the city was allocating parking based on that occupancy. And so that's why I was trying to understand how they could do that if we're being told we can't have that in our code.
Our thought was is that these units are gonna be, are gonna draw the appropriate client or potential resident based on their living needs. We have a history of over-parking, and this, when we did our analysis of all the surrounding cities, this seemed to be the average combined, so, and it's in line with our state code.
And I understand, I don't, in any way, I'm not arguing with the numbers. I was just trying to understand why some of the other cities appear to articulate their parking based on single or double occupancy, and how they could do that if we can't articulate that.
Well, basically, some of those SRO requirements from other cities are, may have been older codes, they have not been updated.
Okay.
And that we are working with the most current housing law right now. So that's kinda what we're going with.
Okay. That, thank you. And that's it, my questions for now. Couple of things.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Yes, no, go ahead. I have several questions, Mayor, if I may. Thank you. Can we, how much of a disincentive is it to developers to require this much parking per unit?
I think a lot of it's gonna depend upon how much land the developer has. If they're developing within a shopping center, which we hope a lot of these end up being in a parking lot of a shopping center wherever, it may not be as troublesome, because parking is generally readily available, because it's parked much higher. If this is a single project on a single piece of land, it will be probably a little more costly to acquire enough land in order to park it sufficiently. So it really depends upon where it's located.
So it doesn't, how much does it cost developers to provide this much parking? How much space do they have to provide? Because they have to provide not just the parking space, but backup space, right? They have to provide not just the space of the parking spot, but other space around it. So how much space is that, that they have to provide?
How much space per parking, how much area do you need for parking space?
Yes.
It's about, it's about three hundred to four hundred square feet per parking spot, and it costs, if it's a surface parking lot, it costs about, between five to ten thousand dollars per parking space, and if a parking structure, you're talking about twenty, thirty thousand dollars per parking space.
Wow, so we're talking about the amount of space for, required for parking, might be more than what the SRO unit actually provides?
Yes, because it is the parking space, plus you need to provide the drive aisle, plus you need to provide, you know, overhang of the parking space, over landscape area, and so on and so forth. It's about close to four hundred square feet per parking space.
Okay, and does everyone who live, who lives in SROs or micro-appartments or studios own a car?
I don't think we could answer that.
Okay, well, I mean, I can tell you, because I've lived in a studio apartment, that, you know, not everyone owns a car that lives in an apartment. And we have, you know, a number of people that are waiting for these to be built, literally, because we have so many three-generation households, like my household, and so many people that want to, and we just, you know, got all these wonderful developments, you know, and jobs, and they're all minimum wage jobs, so they're at the low end. So this would be providing that workforce housing for our employees from the Amazon warehouses and the senior living facilities. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Councilmember. The four hundred and fifty unit SRO units, those are about the smallest units we have, and it's much more likely there'd be people with less vehicles. You mentioned the senior units. State of California, for the affordable senior, only require half a space per unit currently, such as the USA Properties Senior Complex on Sicomore being constructed. Those ninety-nine units require only half space per unit. So it is, there could be a correlation that smaller entry-level units of this size, a large amount of those potential tenants may not have cars.
So we are requiring more of our SRO developers than we are of our senior developers? Is that correct? If we, if we went with one parking space per unit?
It would be more than the senior affordable units, that's correct.
Okay. And you said these are near public transportation, or they typically tend to be near transportation, public transportation? Is that correct? Arterial pathways and things like that?
Yeah, CPD zoning is located on Los Angeles Avenue, Cochran Street, Tappo Street. These are, these are at or near transit routes.
So is it possible that building these SROs in these places would actually increase our ridership of our buses, of our public buses in Simi Valley, and reduce our need to subsidize that cost?
Yes, there is a potential for that.
Okay, wonderful. I saw that there was a request by the Neighborhood Council to limit the number of people living in each unit. Is that legally allowable? Can you do that? And if so, who would enforce that?
As we mentioned earlier, it makes it difficult where we have fair housing law, and if you, we, it would be difficult to enforce it, and it would, potential liability with that with the jurisdiction.
The answer would be no.
Okay. Thank you, yes. Because I'm thinking of the single mom, you know, you know, who is on her own and has two kids, and what, you have to pick one child to live with you, you know, this is the kind of starter unit that they might need, especially if, you know, they're on their own. Single parents, single mom, veteran, recent college graduate. So this would be that diverse housing that would meet the needs of all those kinds of populations, is that correct?
Yes.
And seniors as well, who are looking to downsize?
Of course.
And I have a question. Are we requiring extra parking spaces for ADUs or junior ADUs? Or not?
So if an ADU is within a half a mile, half a mile within a public transit stop, then we don't require additional parking.
Okay, so again, we're, I feel like we're punishing SRO developers by requiring, you know, one parking space per unit. Is, I'm assuming, and I'll ask the question, for developers, is cost one of the bottom-line reasons why they decide not to develop SROs?
We're having many more conversations with developers now about SROs. I would not, I would say the general lack of understanding of an SRO unit and the ability to build them in our community has probably prevented them from being constructed. But I've had several conversations with different landowners and property owners that are now looking at them as an option for their properties. So I would say we're not getting them because people didn't know they could build them.
Because it seems every meeting I've had with a developer in the past three years since I've been elected has been about cost. Every developer has told me, that's too expensive, we can't do that. Our profit margins are razor-thin. I've heard that dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of times. And so it seems if we are imposing a cost of over twenty thousand dollars per parking space, is that correct?
I think it was ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
And that's just, I mean, it's, it all depends on the price of the land. I mean, it's...
Developers are business owners, right? They wanna make a profit, right?
Sure. Every developer, they're not gonna build it unless they can make money. But we really don't, I mean, it's, staff provided an estimate, but we couldn't tell you what the number is until we know what the price of the land is.
So, but the more you require in parking space, the less units can be built, the less profit there is. Is that correct?
Potentially.
Potentially? How could it not cost, if you're taking away units to build parking, that means less units, that means less profit.
If you're building in a larger shopping center that has an abundance of parking, parking, providing sufficient parking may not be a hindrance.
And isn't part of the purpose of SROs to support, the reason why city council and many cities across the country are building these mixed-use kind of, you know, having the residential near businesses, is to support those local businesses? Is that correct?
So sorry, Councilman Louvenus, that might be just a little bit outside of the Brown Act. I think we're focusing on this particular project. That seems to be a broader question.
Okay. My question is just because of the parking issue with regard to, you know, if, well, let me rephrase the question. My other question is about this common area, right, that is being required, the three hundred square foot common area. Does that, is that supposing that they're just gonna, the people who live in SROs are just gonna have nowhere else to go? Isn't the purpose of the SROs near commercial area for them to go out and support, you know, be in the community in those areas?
Well, it's to provide an opportunity for residents to be on-site and have some type of common recreational area, just kinda like the project that was approved on Tappo and I-Lane. But also, I mean, it gets, being near commercial areas, and it gets people out and walking. So no, it's just to provide another onsite amenity.
But in all likelihood, where we've seen higher-density developments, we see, you know, and I see them everywhere, Northridge, Hollywood, you know, everywhere, where we have the, the micro-appartments, the SROs, near businesses, I haven't seen those businesses shut down. I haven't seen the gyms or the bakeries or, you know, that are adjacent to those, the coffee shops. I haven't seen those shut down because they're being supported by the residents in that area. If I could ask, Councilmember, can I, I'm just trying to understand your question. Are you asking the question because you don't want them to have a common space for, say, a barbecue, or you don't want them to have maybe, I don't know, a small garden with, on the top of a roof or something? Is that why you don't want them? Are you suggesting they should not have a common space? No, I am suggesting that we make it as feasible as possible for this type of housing that allows the city to meet the RENA requirements that we seem to be behind on, to be able to be met. So I'm just trying to understand. So does that mean you do or do not want common space? I do not want it to be a restriction to developers, to be incentivized to build this kind of housing that we desperately need in our city, because we have people that are commuting from miles and miles away. Our VMTs, our vehicle miles traveled, have increased every single year in Ventura County. Part of that is because we don't have housing. I understand all that, because, and we understand the value of SROs, but are you saying you do not want common space to be in our, what we're discussing today, as I understand it, is, is how, basically, standards that will be written in the code, that will determine how, when someone comes to build something, that they need to, that are subjective standards that, to be used, that all will look at. And so, as I understand, our job today is to decide some of these specific minute questions. So are you saying you want that open space stricken from this? I'm saying I don't want it to be a barrier. I don't want this to be a barrier for developers to build SROs. That's what I'm saying. So my question to staff is, is that a barrier for developers?
Yeah. The, the three hundred square feet plus the fifteen if you're over ten units, that was ratcheted down a great deal from when we started, and three hundred square feet is essentially a one and a half car garage, which is a small area. It could be any combination, it could be multiple common area rooms, which could be used for various purposes. We don't think that's a significant barrier. It provides some sort of common area for typical residential living events. It could be a small community room, it could be a barbecue area, it could be a lot of things. And we want to provide that atmosphere in this shared living space, so residents can mingle together. So we feel that's, that's a minimum requirement, we feel it's appropriate.
And this is also in line with our current requirements for multifamily housing.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. DeeDee?
Thank you. Thank you for a very thorough report. It was very informative. I covered a lot of the questions I had prior to. What I'm looking at from the parking point of view, that's my only concern, is more a quality-of-life issue than an actual cost. The developer is going to work with whatever codes we have. So, but what I'm looking at, or what I'm thinking about is, is there a way for us to differentiate parking allowances based on the location of the SRO? For example, if it's in a mixed-use place or in commercial, they're most likely gonna have a parking reciprocation agreement. I would agree to the point five, or half a space. But if they're abutting up to or next to a residential area, I would prefer to keep it the one space per unit because of the parking issues we already have citywide, next to any multiple building, housing areas. Even though it's going to be an SRO and one hotel, large hotel room or medium hotel room size, a lot of these may still have two, maybe three people. If you have two adults, I'm gonna guess at least one of them has a car. So I, that's kinda my concern right there, is I'd like to, if it's going to abut up to single-family homes, keep it one parking spot. If it's going to an area where there is reciprocal parking, then half a spot. Is that something that would be feasible?
So on the, on the bottom of page fourteen, there is a discussion on reciprocal parking agreement, which would allow it to be parked within a shopping center, where the director and the Planning Commission can consider how to reduce the parking requirement based upon its location. I think what you're, what, I think the concern you may be expressing is that if it's on a standalone piece of property that is not sufficiently parked, those residents may flow out into adjacent parking areas, residential areas, shopping centers that don't have reciprocal parking agreements, or they're parking on city streets where we don't have any regulations.
Correct, because I see it all over the community. So that's my, so that's more a quality-of-life issue for both the residents of the SRO and the residents in the area.
Correct, yeah.
Initially, when we went to Planning Commission, we came up with those two options. If it was a standalone SRO that wasn't tied to a shopping center, we had a higher ratio than if it was immediately combined as part of a shopping center, and there's probably some confusion on how those numbers worked out, so we kinda reevaluated that option. It's somewhat difficult to try to say, is it immediately adjacent to a single family? How do you calculate that? There might be more of an issue, is there on-street parking nearby versus not? Arterials also don't have parking sometimes, there's issues with that. But the...
If I may, Sean, I think sticking to the one-to-one would address your concern on impact on residential areas. If it's coming into a parking, shopping center, then the developer should be looking at a reciprocal parking agreement with the shopping center owner in order to reduce that number, which would be included as part of their project. So I think sticking to one-to-one would accomplish what you're looking for.
Right, because the reciprocal parking, I know we utilize that in multiple...
We encourage it, yes.
Yeah, I know when I was at the mall, we had it.
Yep.
So I know that's a good way to work things. And a lot of these SROs, if they are going to be in areas that are mixed-use, they're going to be able to most likely have that type of, of an opportunity. All right, thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say?
I just have one more quick question, which is unrelated. Is that defined in here? I understand that we are specifying kitchen and restroom for RENA, to apply to RENA, our RENA numbers, et cetera. Is there a definition, or is it just simply understood what a kitchen entails, for instance? I mean, does, does a hot plate and a fridge satisfy? I just want, is that...
I think the staff report says a kitchen, bathroom...
It does, but I just guess I wanna know what kitchen is defined. That's, I guess that's my question. Or does it, is it just understood that that means standard appliances?
Essentially, sink, refrigerator, oven. That's kinda what we're looking for.
Okay, so, agreed, I completely agree with that. I just wanna know if that, is that understood in planning world that that's what kitchen means?
Right, and it would have to mean building code requirements too for kitchen.
Say it one more time?
Minimum building code requirements, they have a kitchen definition in the building code.
That's what I was asking.
And to, that is correct, and I'll have a follow-up to one of your parking questions earlier.
So my apologies, I was further, I was further in the ordinance from Planning Commission, so you were correct where you caught that it's listed as one uncovered parking, but we can correct that to provide, where your earlier question...
Thank you.
We can correct that.
I appreciate that.
And we currently do not have requirements for guest parking. That was, that was from the previous...
Okay, that's, yeah, I didn't see it there, I was just...
My apologies for that.
And thank you for clarifying, so we have nothing for guest park, okay.
So the guest parking is built into the parking ratio that is being proposed?
Whether it's covered or not.
Right.
Whether it's covered or not.
Okay. And I'm sorry, and so back to the kitchen, that's, that is specified in building code, what is meant by kitchen?
Right, and that would be evaluated too, when, to ensure that there's adequate kitchen when the application comes in.
Fair enough, okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have one more question, but I'll wait my turn.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. My question is, who's going to facilitate these agreements between the SRO developer and the adjacent commercial? Is that something that our planning department is gonna do, or?
They drafted themselves.
So, there's no requirement for the commercial owner to provide this? So, they're just gonna hash it out by themselves?
Yeah, the agreement itself, I mean, we'll look at, I don't know, look to the city attorney, I don't know if we have a...
I don't know if we have specific condition that would be part of that, Sean, do you know?
A lot of times, we anticipate that the ownership of the center is the same owner of the SRO project. So, that's item number one. If they, if this SRO developer happens to work on an agreement with an offsite owner across the street who's a different ownership, then they negotiate their project together. We're not forcing people to get together to create an agreement, they would mutually do that on their own.
And if they are going to come with an agreement, or speaking of that, we need to have some kind of, you know, we don't have to have the agreement itself, but we can, we need to have at least some kind of paperwork, or email, or what-have-you letter, saying that they are in negotiations with such-and-such owners, and that way it's kinda formal, that they're working with them.
Okay. Is it possible, because I've seen this in other cities, that where, if it's the commercial owner who is also developing the SRO, that they could build like a public parking structure, and they say, this is for the commercial and the SRO? Is that feasible? Is that something that could be done?
Sure, yes.
Yes. Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, I have some, I think, maybe questions. First of all, I agree with your assessment, that we're overparked in the large areas of the city. However, I think we have to be very careful not to go the other direction. And looking at the one, one spot per unit, in my opinion, when I think most units will have at least two people living in them, and this city is not designed and not capable to provide transportation for everybody in its current state. And so, I think we have to be very careful. And so, I'm thinking that one per unit is not overparking. And then, the suggestion that, well, they don't drive, somebody's gonna go pick them up, and that somebody's gonna need a place to park, to pick them up, or a place to visit. So, I see a definite need for parking, for even an SRO. When it comes to the argument about the amenities, the workout area, and what have you, I've been very supportive of that, because we're saying that this is workforce housing, maybe affordable housing. It's for the people that can't afford something bigger, or people that want something small. That is, doesn't mean they don't want something nice. And the recent apartments that you folks helped push through up on Patricia have very nice amenities, workout rooms, and areas for people to gather, that I think makes those a very, very nice place to live for folks. And so, that's, that's the kinda thing we don't wanna do, is limit so much in the interest of saving money for the developer, that we end up making a project that it's second-class. And I don't think any of our residents, including our affordable folks that don't have the money to buy something nice, or to afford something bigger and nice, they don't deserve to have something of lesser quality. They deserve good quality. I'm kinda giving my comments at the same time, so I apologize for that. But the covered, I think you answered the question, instead of saying it has to be uncovered, or saying uncovered indicating that it has to be, let the developer decide. If they wanna make it covered, then let them spend the money. That's, they're the ones that have to sharpen the pen. So, I think that's a good move, and I appreciate you saying that you can do that. And I think that's it for, at this point, and we do wanna give the public opportunity to talk. Oh, what are the comment? When you talked about senior parking, like at the new one on Sycamore, and you said they have lesser numbers, and I'm thinking in my mind, who, senior centers, places where there's mainly seniors, they may have a car, one car, but they don't have a lot of traffic in and out, they don't have multiple families for the most part. And I think what we're looking at is the challenges like what are occurring in the San Fernando Valley. The folks in the need of housing, they're having people stay in the housing longer, and they're getting older, and then they're having siblings driving and what have you. And so, you end up with more cars, and I think it's evident over there, the challenge that they have with parking. And I think in SRO, you're gonna have the need for parking, because you do have working, probably a minimum of one and maybe two or more, living there and driving. Where a senior center, so I don't think that's a fair comparison, to say, well, seniors only have a half, and so therefore, an SRO should have half. That doesn't register with me. And with that, we'll go to public comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe we have either two, possibly three speakers.
The first speaker this evening is Evelyn Gatewood. Ms. Gatewood, go ahead and unmute yourself. We can.
Okay. I just want to thank the city for the careful consideration about adding on of the single-room units to our city, by involving the planning commission and the neighborhood councils. Thank you all for all your hard work to keep Seamey a great place to live, and helping all our small businesses. Thank you so much for your time. That's all.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Suzanne Throat. Suzanne, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. You can.
Yes. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Mashburn, thank you for your time. Tonight, I'd like to address the parking spaces required for the small units. I wanna thank you for all the consideration and the great questions that you've had tonight, and in the past, when getting input from the planning commission and the neighborhood Agree that smaller parking requirements is adequate, because these will mostly be attached to commercial buildings, that will have adequate parking available. And this is a good way to obtain affordable housing, without having to increase the density in residential areas, as well as an efficient use of space to meet our housing element It's been informational, listening to the entry level, and that it would be near transportation, and limiting the residents to two maximum persons, is very helpful. I'd also like to thank the council for looking out for small business and restaurant owners, and creating a plan that will help them thrive again, by encouraging additional temporary and permanent outdoor dining areas, for our restaurants need this and deserve it. So, thank you again, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is David Alpern. Mr. Alpern, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
We can. Fantastic, appreciate your time, everybody. I apologize, this might be a little disjointed and quick. My father is just getting released from the hospital right now, so I'm gonna go have to take him, pick him up. So, I will try and be as brief as I can. Anyway, David Alpern, I'm one of the principals with Colton Lee Communities, who brought you the Tappo Street Lofts down on Tappo and Eileen. And in discussing, or hearing the comments this evening, I just wanted to talk about the parking. I believe I heard the average parking stall size was approximately 380 to 400 square feet. The average SRO unit size, I think, was on the order of 350 square feet, if I'm correct. So, it's very possible that some projects that will be coming before you in the future will have more square footage allocated to parking than the actual living space. Yeah, listen, I don't envy your position, having to make these decisions, but if the goal is to help provide more housing, to help meet the state RENA numbers, and sort of get off, get out from under the microscope of HUD and HCD, I really believe that minimizing the parking standard at this point would be very helpful in attaining that goal. And quite frankly, you know, we could agree to that now, and in the future revise that standard, if we realize it's not working. But I believe staff has done a great job in identifying areas throughout the city, where this type of use could be best suited. Unfortunately, it is outside of residential zones. So, with that, you know, I just, I strongly believe that limiting the parking at this level would be more beneficial than increasing it, and then adjusting it as needed going forward. So, with that, unless you guys have any questions, I appreciate your time and consideration, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further speakers, under item 4A.
Hey, any more questions from the council?
Yes, I have, is the other person Cassandra Doug, is that a staff member, or is that a speaker as well?
That's for 5A.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanna make sure we got everybody. Mayor, are you taking comments or a motion?
Any questions or comments?
Yes, if I can do my comments, that would be great. Thank you, Mayor. The timeline of this ordinance is not lost on me. And the truth is that we do need housing, and we need to provide housing for all of our workforce, including the minimum wage workers, who are, who are being brought in by the new businesses that are coming to our city. The reason we have three-generation households is because children cannot afford to move out, and parents can't afford to move out either. And so, there, we have three-generation households, like mine, and many, 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 many across the city, where we have all the residents, and there is a waitlist. And I know, because a lot of my mother-in-law's friends have told me, they've been trying to get into low-income senior housing, they haven't been able to. So, this would actually provide housing for seniors as well, who have been waiting to try to get into something small, that they don't wanna maintain something large anymore. And I think it's unfair to ask for, for these developers to have more parking standards, when these could, and probably will fill the needs of some of our seniors in this community, who no longer drive, who carpool, many of them do carpool. So, I think it's unfair to require more parking of these SRO units than it is to require of low-income senior housing. We need to be cognizant of the needs of this community, the changing needs, and the needs that we have had. We are gonna be dinged for vehicle miles traveled, if we do not encourage the building of diverse housing such as this, because we will continue to have people move out, or have people move in, with their parents, or with their children, or with their siblings, or with their friends, because they can't afford anything else. And the strain that this puts on families is unimaginable. And I hear it every single day. I hear it from parents, I hear it from kids, I hear it from grandparents, because this is the norm now in this city, because we don't have housing like this. So, we need to lower the barrier as much as possible, and make sure that, and I agree with you, Mayor, we need, we need to have the same amenities for, you know, low-income residents, as we do for everyone else. And they don't need, you know, an entire parking space. This is not a quality of life issue, this is an issue about equity. This is an issue about ensuring that our workers in the city have the option of living here, not having to commute. This will reduce traffic. If you're building along arterial pathways where there is public transportation, this is actually gonna reduce traffic, reduce pollution. This will increase the usage of our public transportation, which will also decrease the amount of subsidies that we have to provide for our public transportation. It's a win-win. This is a win-win. So, you know, reducing the parking requirement to half a parking space per SRO unit is gonna be what's best for our community, for all generations, from our seniors who wanna downsize, to people who are just starting out, to even small families, single parents, who are looking for something affordable, and they don't wanna commute. And who doesn't wanna reduce traffic? What a great way to reduce traffic, right? And increase the quality of air by having less pollution, is by building housing right here in the city, where you may not need to have a car at all, where you can ride your bike, or you can walk. And that's what we wanna do, that's what we wanna have. Because we're upon wildfire season, and we know that that is impacted by the amount of vehicles that we have. So, building housing for our workers is going to increase that. So, I am in favor of having the half parking space requirement, and I agree with the speaker who said that we can always revisit it later, if we find that there is an issue. But it is a win-win, in terms of our community, and having more use of public transportation. Thank you, Mayor, those are my comments.
Thank you.
I'll just, real quick, I disagree with most of what Councilmember Louveno said. I do believe one parking space per SRO is the best way to go for, for now. If we find it's overparked, then we can adjust it at that point in time. If they're going to be built more in the commercial areas, then the reciprocal parking, I think, will take care of that. I don't want to see the overflow of parking that we currently have around multi-use, or multifamily buildings and such, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine?
Thank you, Mayor. This whole discussion is about objective SRO design standards, and I very much appreciate your taking the time to bring that to us, because I know, in our recent discussion with an SRO project, they weren't in place. And so, we were shooting in the dark what was appropriate, and very appreciative, I might add, that in that project, that the developer was willing to speak with the residents who are next door, and made some major concessions in development, so that that was acceptable to all. And so, I want to thank the developer for doing that. But the whole reason we're here is now to set what we think is quality, objective design standards, that's a blueprint that people understand going forth. And I wanna be sure that we're comparing apples to apples, not apples to oranges. An SRO is a single-room occupancy unit for someone of any age, but because in this design standard, you've built it of a size, or you've restricted it from 250 to 450 square feet, it's a size that likely will be affordable, likely is absolutely entry level, because of the size of that. And so, it's not the same thing as low-income senior subsidized housing, it's a different animal, in a sense. And so, I think we have to look at parking separately, myself, because of that. But I want to thank you, though, for giving us, really, a quality design that we can say makes sense for our community, one of which is the size, which is, I think, 250 to 450 is an excellent barometer for size, for what it will provide, and will give that price point that we want, to welcome people into the housing market. I appreciate, secondly, that you articulated it needs to have bathroom-kitchen facilities. I know some SROs, as we looked at it way back when, common, shared, it wasn't delineated. But you have given us that as a benchmark, and I think that that provides amenities that are critical, and also supports our housing, our RENA numbers, that are, that we are trying to, trying to meet. And so, I appreciate that. The discussion about multi-generational households, I understand that myself. Through COVID, I had three generations in my house, I was probably bursting at the seams with 12 people. I get, I understand that. But I'm appreciative that we have this quality built in... But I'm appreciative that we have this quality built-in standard that allows developers to come forward. With regards to the one issue that seems to be a discussion right now is parking. What is appropriate, what is not? I tend to concur, I want to err on the side of, of, I believe, of making sure that if it's in a residential area, that we're not impinging on potential residents that are, that are nearby and overflowing. And so because of that, I agree with Mayor Protim Kavanaugh and as was articulated by our, by Brian Gabler, by our C manager, that at this point, going with one, one parking space per unit does protect, if it's in a residential area, may protect some of the potential overflow. And I expect if it's built in a commercial area, there will be reciprocal agreements and all will be well. So I guess what I'm saying at this point is I currently support the one-to-one. If we need to evaluate or want to evaluate it later, I think it's easier to go that direction as opposed to going, starting smaller and say, wait, we made a mistake. I think it's safer at this point just to have that one-to-one. And thank you for being willing to change the, change that park, eliminate that word. I do think we want to give our developers an option if they want to have quality, covered parking, et cetera. Great, let them decide what that looks like. So, but again, I just want to say thank you that this is, I much appreciate this coming before us tonight. So those are my comments.
And that proposed change would be to municipal code section 9-44.215, subpart 7, where we would strike the uncovered word from that definition of parking.
Okay. Councilmember Judge, you have anything?
Mr. Mayor wanted to make a motion. Move staff's recommendation with the addition of the Planning Commission and Neighborhood Council's recommendation of one parking space per unit.
Second.
Motion is second.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item 5, Public Statements. This is the time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council. However, they will not be read by the City Clerk this evening. All persons who register by 3:30 PM today will be called on to speak during this public statement, item 5, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin the Zoom statements.
Yes, I would just like to remind the speakers that when we don't respond to some of their statements and questions, it's because what they have to say tonight is not on the agenda and therefore the Brown Act does not allow us to respond and have a discussion with them regarding their statements. We certainly are not trying to be rude, however, it sometimes may look like we're being rude because we can't respond. So please understand that and we do appreciate you speaking tonight. Ready for the first speaker?
The first speaker we have this evening is Rocky Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for that great discussion on the last topic. I think it was a great result. I'm calling about something coming up, item 8A, about the temporary use permits for the restaurants and being able to use outdoor dining spaces. And I encourage you tonight to have staff continue down the path of finding the wonderful ways that we can incorporate outdoor dining in ways that don't interfere with public right-of-way. These 18 remaining restaurants that are using these temporary use permits, we're helping them thrive and, and continuing to find ways to allow them to thrive is something that we owe them as restaurants that struggled through and are now hiring back their employees. But additionally, with this type of new use permits and recognizing that outdoor dining spaces are desirable for restaurants looking to come to Simi Valley, I think you'll open up a floodgate of new potential restaurants that want to come and utilize outdoor spaces as well, which increases jobs and increases our ability to have choice when we go out to eat. So thank you for the consideration of that topic. And I really encourage you to tell staff to keep going because it's really important to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Cassandra Douglas. Cassandra, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Is it my turn to speak?
It is. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I was rejoining. Okay, my name's Cassandra Douglas and I'm a resident of Simi Valley. Actually did want to speak on the prior agenda item. Unfortunately, I guess I didn't include it in my email. I do want to make a quick point on that. I appreciate you all for passing the amendment. Just know for future reference that there is an UCLA Institute of Transportation Studies that found when parking requirements are removed, developers provide more housing and less parking in different types of housing, housing in older buildings and previously disinvested areas. And also, these mandates can add tens of thousands of dollars onto the cost of a new home or a new apartment building. So just please, in future, in future resolutions, please do keep that in mind that it is a fact that costing can come up, can cost up to $80,000 per spot. Other than that, I do want to address what happened at the last meeting. I understand you can't respond to it. There's no need to respond. Already sent emails and got no response from you in regards to those emails. One thing I do want to do is just give a huge thank you to Councilwoman Louvenos. I myself, as a resident of Simi Valley, as a member of the LGBTQIA community and as a woman of color, have never felt seen by anyone on City Council, any politician, more so than I have by her and her fight and how she fights for the community. So I wanted to tell her that I admire her efforts to include all members of the community in policies and housing and budget and in government accountability. Also in getting the youth and other members of the community encouraging us to get involved in the civic engagement process, because whether or not you agree with us, at least you're hearing our voices. She does listen to her constituents, which I think you all can learn something from that. And just so you know, every time you fight her, you're painting a picture of yourself that's based on outdated values. Simi Valley is changing and it's a positive change. I appreciate the lights at City Hall. That is a great step. The LGBTQIA community would like to not be an afterthought or an inconvenience. I did all invite you in an email to the Pride event that's happening this weekend. I do urge you to come with open heart and open mind and listen to the community and how we'd like to be represented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Joe Pachowski. Mr. Pachowski, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. I'm Joe Pachowski and I live, I'm a resident of Wood Ranch. I wanted to come and speak tonight because I was reading an article in the Ventura County Star four days ago. The article is titled "See Me to Form Task Force to Ensure Equitable Access to City Services." And in that article, it mentions a thing we heard about in the budget meeting from City Manager Gabler, that Simi's looking at creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion task force. I want to let the council members know that diversity, equity, and inclusion has become a buzzword among individuals promoting critical race theory. And just want to caution the council against taking, about instituting critical race theory policies here in Simi Valley. Everybody thinks it sounds nice and everybody seems to, seems to assume that equity means equality and it doesn't. Equity is a reference to making the playing field completely level for everybody rather than actually giving those who are not equal or who are not equi- Equity refers to raising people up to the point where they, where they're not, where somebody else is being hurt. It's not equality. Equality is, all men were created equal. But equity is turning around and giving somebody else a preference that somebody else doesn't have. And I want to remind the council that the State of California back in 1996 passed Proposition 209. And Proposition 209 states unequivocally that the State of California shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in the operation of public employment, public education, and public contracting. And so I just want to make sure that the council can, takes the, takes, consults with our city attorney to make sure that we're not violating the state, the constitution of the State of California as it pertains to that, as we implement this diversity, equity, and inclusion task force. Because it's quite possible that that, that it could come to that. Now, reading the, reading the comments from, from City Manager Gabler, it didn't sound like that was going to be the case.
Your time's up, I'm sorry. Kelly, do we have any other speakers?
We had one additional speaker that is no longer in the waiting room, so we do not have anyone else waiting.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody have any comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a quick comment if possible.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a quick comment if possible. I'd like to thank Ms. Douglas for her comments. I would like to see the rainbow lights for the entire month of June. I know that even in our state's capital, up in Sacramento and Ventura County, they have the pride flag flying. In every single city in the county of Ventura has a pride flag flying except for Simi Valley. So I think it's the least we can do to recognize and see and addressing the issues of mental health that are so prevalent in this community by acknowledging our LGBTQ community and keeping the lights on at City Hall for the remainder of the month. I will be making that motion in 9B. As to equity and equality, there are federal statutes that require us to ensure that there is no discriminatory practices within our employees and within here, because we are a government entity. And so the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force is to make sure that everyone is treated equally here as an employee and to make sure that no one is discriminated against based on the race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, et cetera. So there are federal constitutional considerations and state constitutional considerations that we have as a government entity that we have to abide by. That does not mean that we are discriminating against anyone. Quite the opposite, we're making sure that no one feels discriminated against and that everyone feels welcome here, regardless of their background. That's the purpose and my understanding of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protim, do you have any?
No comment.
Elaine?
Actually, just wanted to say thank you to the three participants who chose to share their comments. And I'm sure we'll be talking more about the restaurant issue coming up, just to thank you. That's all.
Okay. Next one up, my favorite part, Consent Calendar.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 6, the Consent Calendar. And there are three resolutions for your consideration this evening. The reading of the resolutions is as follows. Consent item 6, Resolution Number 2021-23, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, Amending Resolution Number 2017-41 to Delete a Classification Title of a General Unit Designated Classification and Related Salary Range and Reclassify the Incumbent to a Management Designated Classification. And Resolution Number 2021-24, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, Amending Resolution Number 2018-03 to Modify Certain Management Designated Classifications Along With the Related Salary Range for One Classification. And Consent Item 7, Resolution Number 2021-25, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, Approving Acceptance of Grant Funds and Execution of a Grant Agreement and Any Amendments thereto from the Fiscal Year 2021-22, State of California Department of Highway Patrol, CHP Cannabis Tax Grant Program.
Okay, anybody have any items they want pulled?
Mayor, I'd like to pull items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7, and just have quick questions.
2, 3, 4, 5, 7. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and start discussing 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7. Your first question on number 2.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure this is a question for the City Manager that, I have no problem with the award of contracts. I know we're gonna be gone for a month. But the grant of easement to SoCal Edison to permit the construction and maintenance of electric facilities on city property, that's on page 2 of that item located at 781 and 1/2 Pacific Street, is that a new easement? Is that a permanent easement? I'm just concerned about granting easements.
It's, what it is, is it is an easement on our property where one of the hubs for the sci-fi fiber network will be located. And we need to provide them an easement in order to provide power to that location.
Okay, so it's, it's not forever, right?
It is not, no.
Okay, that was my question on that one.
Okay, 2 is done. 3. Your question's on 3?
Yes. Sorry, my computer's slower than my brain. I saw that the, the funds that are coming, the $272,400 that are coming for the construction cost of the project, that's coming from the American Rescue Plan. Is that correct?
We believe so. We are waiting for the final guidelines on the American Rescue Plan funds, which will be available in July. Under the current interim rule, we believe that storm drain projects are an eligible expenditure in the classification that are provided in the interim rule. So if that being the case, then we would recommend when we come back for an approval of or some consideration of the use of the ARP money, that the $272,000 be used to pay for this project.
So that's part of the $15 million that we're expected to receive as a city under the American Rescue Plan?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if, if, for some reason, I can't imagine that wouldn't be, because I know infrastructure is included in the American Rescue Plan, but if for some reason that it's not, if it doesn't qualify for that, because it sounds like, based on the report, we need to repair this regardless, could we use the $6 million from the COVID funds that we never used for that?
We sure could, yes.
Okay.
There's many options available if the ARP money is not available.
Okay, thank you. That's my question on that one.
Okay, number 4.
I saw that there were additional costs, so the contract was for $148,000. And now it's, you know, almost $50,000 more, 40, over $40,000 more. I'm just curious, were these costs not anticipated or were there things that we did to incur those costs or was this our fault?
I think we were, no, I think we were anticipating that at some level, staff would be able to take on these tasks. But I think the, I think our staff, we have a couple of vacancies and I think our staff would feel more comfortable just allowing the consultant. and I think our staff would feel more comfortable just allowing the consultant to roll on through and do the work, quite frankly, do the work for us at a fairly minimal amount as compared to what our staff investment would be.
Okay, and this is like a one-time thing, because we only do the update every so many years, is that correct?
That is correct, and it's this is all grant money as well, so it's not it's not actually coming out of the city's coffers.
So it's not an ongoing cost?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, number five?
So my question on this approval of a contract is that it states that it was for, if you look at page one, it says based on the sublegation, HDL was averaging payments of $16,784 annually, and then it jumps to $74,000 over the three-year contract. I'm just curious, like, what happened? Because that's a huge jump, that's a huge shift.
They began, at our request, they began auditing our business tax and sales tax folks, and that has resulted in additional dollars coming into the city.
Does that include when we had the moratorium on on business taxes?
It would have it would have affected that, no.
Okay, because I noticed it's from 2007 to through 2019, and at some point in that period of time, we did have a moratorium on taxes, is that correct?
We did, yeah, but this it wouldn't have applied to this.
Okay, so but everyone's paying their taxes now, we're doing good.
We're making sure everyone is on the same playing field.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay, number seven.
And for number seven, I saw, I'm waiting for, I don't know who's coming, thanks to Chief.
I'm gonna hand this one off to Dave.
Whoever whoever's in charge of this one. Good evening, Chief, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, I saw that it says that there's no impact to the general fund.
Right.
On page three. So I had a couple of questions on this one.
Okay.
How much of this is being, so if we don't get this money, then it's not going to be taken out of the general fund, is that correct?
Um, that's correct, yeah, we just wouldn't get training for the officers to enforce DUIs.
So someone else would come in and and provide that training?
At the, well, we would have to do the training, it would cost us the the train to do it, but we just wouldn't, you know, have the availability for those officers to get it. This is grant money that we can use to reimburse for the training that we've done, so.
Okay, for, because I saw that you said the advantage is to have in-house training.
Right.
Okay, and how much of this is, I see that this funding is for, and I'm a grant writer, so I read this stuff with a fine-tooth comb, so just so you know, it's for education and prevention and not just enforcement of the laws, so.
Right.
Um, how much of this is edu-, can you just explain a little bit about the education and prevention part, because I don't think we hear about that enough?
Yeah, the education part is when you train the officers in the drug recognition, you know, when they become a drug recognition expert, they can also educate the public through our DUI checkpoints. So when people come through and we talk to people, you know, there's an opportunity for the officers to educate people to go out and talk in schools, things like that, to talk about the dangers of DUI, the Every 15 Minutes program, we have experts that go out to that, that participate in that, and walk people through the field sobriety tests. So it's all it's all part of it, you know, you know, trying to prevent those crashes from taking place and from people from driving drunk.
So the prevention is the DUI checkpoints?
That's part of it. It's prevention is like a, it's a, you know, a big concept, so, you know, when you have officers who aren't trained, then they don't necessarily know what to tell the public, you know, about certain aspects of things, you know, so, you know, for instance, if your house gets burglarized, officers are trained to come out and talk about where to put certain locks and alarm systems and things like that. It's the same with DUI, obviously, the idea is to catch people before they actually get behind the wheel and drive, and so, you know, the more knowledgeable officers are about, you know, the symptoms and then the effects of it, the more they can share with the public in their conversations and in their public presentations and, you know, in the different opportunities. DUI checkpoint is one opportunity to do that when people come through. In fact, most of the DUI checkpoint is an education piece for the people that come through it.
So if someone goes through a DUI checkpoint, because I just want to understand the prevention part of it.
Sure.
If someone goes, someone ends up at a DUI checkpoint, and, you know, they, how do you know if they're, you know, if they might be, might not be, do you give a warning? Like, I have a scale, right, in my classroom, first warning, second warning, call home, like that kind of stuff. So what what is your procedure, like, for the prevention part, that's what I'm asking?
The prevention part is that, let's say, somebody comes in and the officer checks their symptoms, let's say they have had a little bit to drink, but they're not, they're maybe not under the influence. So that's a great opportunity for somebody, for an officer, to talk to people and say, you know, this is, you know, it's not safe if you're to get in an accident, even if you aren't legally drunk, you, that could cost you your life or somebody else's life, and, you know, you need to think about that. So it's really the process of talking to people. Also, you know, some people take prescription medications and they don't sometimes pay attention to the instructions on it, and, you know, that's, you know, also a violation of the law. So it gives us an opportunity to interact with people, and then if people come through and they're completely sober and we check their symptoms, it, you know, is a good way for us to remind people and thank them for not being under the influence. So it's it's a it's a process of, you know, it's prevention. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how else to defend or to describe it other than we want to get there before they actually do it, like with any other type of crime.
Okay, and these DUI checkpoints are not used at all to check for whether or not people have a driver's license, or they're undocumented, or any those kinds of things at all?
I would say that they're, they, if somebody drives through a checkpoint and doesn't have a driver's license, they're going to get cited for it, but they're not, they're not used to check for people's, you know, immigration status or anything like that. But if somebody comes through the checkpoint and they're unlicensed, they're going to get a ticket and they're going to be dealt with in that respect, but, yeah, that's not their sole purpose. Their sole purpose is to, you know, detect people that are under the influence and to educate the public as to the dangers of drunk driving. I mean, one of the things is just when you see all those cars lined up in the flashing lights, and, you know, we've had cases where people actually do a U-turn and take off, and, you know, that's part of the education, you know, they they don't know where we're going to be all the time even though we post it, and that, you know, it kind of, you know, even for people driving by or driving through, it's a reminder to them, you know, that we're out there looking for that.
Okay, because you do realize that there are undocumented residents that might turn around, not because they're drunk or inebriated or under the influence, but just because, you know, they're traumatized by interactions, so.
Absolutely.
And the reason I'm bringing it up is because on page 11 of this report, it says that all law enforcement organization grantees shall comply with California law regarding racial profiling, and I want to make sure that we're not violating that.
I don't understand what racial profiling has to do with accepting a grant for DUI prevention.
I just want to make sure we comply with the requirements of the grant.
This is going way, way beyond the exception and the financial.
I just don't understand where we're going with it.
No, this is, this is, we're not going to conduct sobriety tests in the field, so I don't think we need to take your time to train us to do that. So the question is, a resolution acceptance of $17,000 from the 2021 California Department of Highway Patrol from the cannabis tax grant, that's the question we need to deal with.
Right, and I'm happy to answer whatever questions we have on that, but, you know, I'm trying to stick to what's in the statute of order.
No, I understand.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're following the requirements of the grant.
We definitely are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I move to approve the consent calendar items one through seven?
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item 7A, consideration of a resolution confirming and renewing the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. The reading of the resolutions is as follows. Resolution number 2021-26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, confirming and renewing the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency, and city manager Gable will be presenting this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, you've seen this movie before, but we're getting, we believe we're getting closer to the end with the changes at the state level to reopen the economy. We are now also now able to, in general public, not wear masks or social distance, and now new rules regarding employers and how they are protecting their employees are are in place. But however, the COVID does remain out there and active, and there are a number of governors' executive actions that are in place as well, and we would recommend continuing on the local emergency, at least for the next go-round. Your next review of this would be at the August, second meeting in August, August 26th, 23rd, Council meeting. That allows a number of things to still remain in place, including the non-turnoff of water, the commercial moratorium on for commercial evictions, continuing with the outdoor dining and the outdoor business usage, allows those things to continue without any special dispensation. We are, the governor has indicated that by September 30th, he anticipates ending all of his executive actions at that point in time. So with, as we get closer to the second meeting in August, we'll be, have a better understanding of where that is at. The last thing that is out there is the the state order on eviction prevention for residential. Those discussions, if they didn't come to a conclusion today, were happening today and in the next couple of days, and right now, the governor is looking at extending that until September 30th as well. So with that, it is still our recommendation to adopt this resolution, continuing the local emergency. In our, in my opinion, there really isn't a downside to keep it going, but I'm more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, questions of really the city manager?
I have a question, Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
I, if we're going to extend the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency, I'd like to make sure that we use some of those $6 million funds that we set aside to deal with this, with this COVID emergency, because there are multiple strains that are floating out there. We still have people under the age of 12, children under the age of 12, and people that are immunocompromised that cannot get the vaccine. And so I would like to make sure that we use the funding that we set aside to deal with this emergency, to deal with this emergency, to help our employees, to help our residents, to help our businesses. So that that's all that I ask, that we consider in adopting this resolution and extending the proclamation of the local emergency. Can I get a commitment from the city manager?
Well, we intend to bring to the City Council, probably about the same timeframe in August, a proposal for uses of the American Rescue Plan money, as well as the $6 million COVID fund that was set aside that is likely not needed for that purpose, really up to the council how they would like to spend, appropriate that money.
But like, I have to ask, is this part of this?
It's not part of this action.
No, this this isn't where we're at.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking for it to be consideration since we're extending the declaration.
I think what we ought to do is look at the business before us and.
Well, they go hand in hand, Mayor.
Well, they go hand in hand, but they're a different subject. I mean, we could talk anytime later or put it on the agenda to discuss the spending of the money, and I think that's already scheduled, they plan on bringing it to us.
Yeah, August.
So, but we have to decide if we're going to extend the emergency, the local emergency.
Okay, Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2021-26, confirming and renewing the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 8A, request for direction and status update on the Simi Valley Municipal Code text amendments to encourage additional temporary and permanent outdoor dining areas for eating and drinking establishments. And Claudia Pedrosso is here for this presentation.
While Claudia's getting her presentation ready, I'll introduce the project. I'm going to show you a screen of our recent code amendments that we've been working on in the past year, and also some upcoming code amendments. The outdoor dining for permanent outdoor dining provisions is the discussion item for tonight. And there we go. So on the left-hand screen are some of the code updates planning has been working on, and on the right-hand side are some of the code amendments we're doing, including optional developments standards, parking updates, mixed-use zone updates, updates to the western specific planned industrial zoning, updating density bonus laws, and also electronic signage provisions. But again, tonight is for permanent outdoor dining options, and Claudia Pedrosso is here to begin our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the council. This presentation is to give you an overview of the temporary temporary outdoor dining areas and get direction from council on how to proceed to allow the conversion from temporary to permanent, as well as allowing new and expansion of existing outdoor dining areas. In order to help suppress the spread of COVID-19 virus, the State of California issued a state of emergency in March 2020 and imposed indoor operations restrictions on businesses. Shortly after, the county of Ventura declares state of local emergency, which was followed by the city manager's declaration of local emergency, and issued Director of Emergency Services, DES, order number one, which was related to evictions, moratoriums. And in June, the council ratified the DES order number two and three, which related to restaurants, outdoor dining, and also other outdoor business operations. For restaurants, this meant that they could temporarily use existing parking lots, landscaped areas, and require setbacks for outdoor dining. As restaurants were only allowed to operate outdoors for most of the pandemic, local restaurants have, patrons got more used to eating outdoors, and also local restaurants have expressed interest in making this temporary outdoor dining areas into permanent facilities. As a result, the city council requests staff to revise the outdoor dining requirements. These are some examples of some of the existing installations right now. To the left, we have cronies. This shows the outdoor dining area located within the parking area. It has fencing around and cannabis for cover. They have recently submitted an application to convert this area into a permanent outdoor dining area. The picture on the right is Chuy's Restaurant, and this outdoor area, dining area, is actually built over a platform that is flush with the sidewalk, and this one provides accessibility going across. They use their own furniture and provide shades for canopy, and this is a temporary canopy shade. Again, on the left side over here, we have a picture of Bieb's Diner, and they actually use their outdoor dining, they use the existing sidewalk and also part of the driveway that goes to the back of the shopping center. And on the right side, we have a Buca Cafe that also actually built a platform that is flush with the adjacent sidewalk, and it was surrounded by fencing and also has a canopy for cover. These outdoor dining areas are possible with a collaborative effort from the City Fire Department, Police Department, and the State of California Alcohol and Beverage Control Agency, also known as ABC. As these dining areas are located on driveways, parking lots, sidewalks, landscaping, and they're not fully fenced for the purpose of serving alcohol, so most of these facilities could not be allowed on the city currency standards. These areas have been crucial for the economy of these restaurants, as operations restrictions were imposed as a way to help reduce exposure to the virus. So they definitely needed this outdoor dining areas so they could continue it to be open in business. We actually did a survey of the temporary use permits that we issued for these outdoor dining areas, and 29 were issued. Out of the 29, 18 of those are currently active and 11 have been removed. And we also asked them about their operations with during this this pandemic, and also how their door facility worked with them. These outdoor areas range in size from 480 square feet to 1,500 square feet, and it cost them from a couple thousand dollars to almost $20,000. Some people rented, some restaurants rented their equipment, some of them purchased their equipment. About 89% of the restaurants are interested in turning their temporary dining area into a permanent amenity, with the majority being interested in keeping the same size as they have now. Only two restaurants encounter operational issues, while the majority of the restaurants did not have any issues at all. And there's a couple of restaurants that are not interested in keeping the outdoor, temporary outdoor dining area because they had operational issues. We also did a little bit of research around some of the cities in Ventura County and outside of the county. outside of the county, and that we found that most cities are going to extend the temporary outdoor dining up to six months after the local emergency expires, but some other cities are continuing their outdoor dining allowances till 2022. And some cities are contemplating actually making some of these requirements or converting these facilities into permanent facilities, and actually have contracted some local consultants, while other ones, other cities don't have any interest in moving forward. They just, as soon as their local emergency is, is done with, the, all the temporary facilities will have to be taken down. These are some pictures from Santa Barbara State Street. You know, obviously, this is on the public right away. For those that have been able to go to Santa Barbara, or maybe not, State Street has been closed for quite a few blocks, blocks to, they have been closed to idle traffic, and it's only open to pedestrian traffic. And what you see over here is some of the outdoor dining areas, which they use some planner boxes to confine the outdoor dining area. And on the left side, you see where they have provided also permanent roof, like a structure wall, a low wall around the dining area, or they also have used umbrellas, and they have used planner boxes as well, so they can define the area that they're serving the customers. Like I mentioned before, in order to allow the expansion or create new outdoor dining areas, the, our current code will have to be amended as to what, a lot of the stuff that is installed right now is not, will not comply with any other regulations. So in order to make this work, we will have to make amendments to a code to allow encroachment into required landscape and setback areas, but also we will require in return to provide some additional architectural and landscaping enhancements, so these amendments become attractive and will help activate the areas. In addition to allowing encroachment into setbacks, the parking requirements would also have to be modified. Right now, most shopping centers are restricted to the amount of restaurants they can have on site due to parking requirements. So part of the stuff that we will have to look into would be to allow removal of some of the parking requirements for outdoor dining, also reduce the parking requirements for restaurants and outdoor dining areas, also looking to allowing a shared or alternate hours parking with a shared parking analysis. And another idea will be also to allow valet parking and allow also the attendant parking for the valet parking. And that way, they could, new restaurants could actually work out the parking requirements and still be able to provide these restaurants. Another thing that we want to look into is the proposed outdoor dining design guidelines, and these ones will give you the characteristics that would address materials, furnishings, amenities, and accessibility, as well as safety measures. For example, if it's located within a parking lot, buffers will need to be incorporated via short walls for planners or the like, so we can separate the drive aisles from the customers. Also, the furniture will have to be removable and store indoors at the end of a business day in order to avoid the use of the area after hours. But we're also looking for decorative items like lighting and have materials that complement the building they're adjacent to, and maybe also provide some amenities like bicycle parking and, and others as well. And we're also looking to encourage creativity. These two pictures are examples of creative dining areas in parking lots, using lighting, planners, and even decorative flooring over the dining platform. Establishing these guidelines and requirements will allow restaurants to expand their outdoor amenities and also facilitate introduction of more restaurants with varied foods. In return, these restaurants will help activate shopping centers that have suffered many, that have suffered because of the tenant closures, the restrictions, and also will also create a more lively atmosphere and create a destination for people to gather. These changes will reflect the changing retail center theme, as consumers are placing a greater emphasis on destination entertainment experiences such as dining. So our recommendation is to, for council to direct staff to continue processing the Development Code text amendments for outdoor dining areas, with input from neighborhood councils and planning commission or not, or any other further comments from the city council that may have. This concludes staff presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Great report. That was good. A lot, obviously, a lot of thought went into that. And I'm going to start by just saying that what came to my mind during this was, looking at what you're asking for conclusion-wise, is more time to research it and prepare design guidelines. I would like to see us look at, like what some of the other cities did, and that is extend the temporary permits that you already have for, probably at this point, I'd say till the end of the year, since we're already halfway through the year. But if that's something that you would like, please let us know. But, and the, the thing I would worry about, as I looked at those samples that you provided, is, is of course, safety. And you, you did say the driveway separation, which obviously you're thinking about that. And I looked at the, all the umbrellas. I only wish we could do that here, but when the wind comes up, all those umbrellas would be in Thousand Oaks, you know, so. But I trust that you're thinking of all those issues also. So that's where I'd like to see us head, is extend the current permit to, so those folks can also be recovering funds to where, when we give them these guidelines, the design guidelines, that will cost something, they've made a little more money and they can afford to jump into it. So, but thank you very much. It was a really nice report.
Yes, Mayor Mashburn, the, that is, our intent is to give you the option to extend the temporary use permits. Tonight's presentation is kind of beyond the temporary use permits you see now, to make those permanent post-pandemic or post-COVID. The order, which was just adopted, I believe, is possibly until late August, city manager, and certainly the city council could, we'd come back with a resolution or a method to extend it to December, the dining part of it.
Yeah, that's something I could just ask for agenda item down the road.
Well, I, I can give you two, two points, two thoughts in that. On page 14 of the staff report, we've given you two paths you can go, how quickly you want to go with it. If, if you want us to go to the neighborhood council and planning commission for their input, we anticipate being back to you before the end of the calendar year. Not a problem. If you, if you'd like to hurry this process up, we could probably be back to you without going to the neighborhood council and planning commission around the September timeframe. Either way, with the, when the council is, is discussing changes to an existing ordinance or code, the city has a policy of suspending enforcement of that section of the code. So if we were going to, if council approves tonight moving forward on, on these changes, we would not enforce anything against the restaurants that are currently using the spaces out there in the parking lot until it's resolved by the, by the city council. So the bottom line is, we wouldn't be...
But you wouldn't entertain new...
We wouldn't be entertaining any new one, but we would not be enforcing against any of the current.
Would you still, would building safety or code enforcement still visit those locations occasionally for safety purposes?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. We want to make sure that, yeah. We don't want any, any growth in, in the facilities that are currently out there as, as currently approved.
I'd also like to point out, and I get around the city quite a bit and visit the restaurants, I have not heard, and you know we hear complaints, I have not heard one complaint regarding the temporary permits and the, how hard they are to get, anything like that. I have not heard any complaints, which tells me it's very well accepted that you folks are, are hitting it out of the ballpark for helping these people out. Other comments?
I do have some comments and questions. First of all, thank you for adding a new word to my vocabulary, Parklet. That was, that I, it didn't come up in my, my word check. It kept telling me it was misspelled, but I want you to, I'm sure it'll catch up with you, but anyway, so thank you. I guess as I read through, on page 14, it talks about, under temporary use permits, the maximum has been 64 days. Obviously, that's outside of, of, I guess, the regulations that we, the DES orders through this state of emergency. So I was trying to understand, if the maximum for temporary use permit is 64 days, first of all, is that codified for our, for our city? Is that where that 64-day figure comes from?
Yes, 64 days is for standard temporary use permits such as parking lot sales and those types of events.
But that wouldn't, that's not applying to the, the DES order?
So I understand that doesn't apply to the DES order. So that's what I'm trying to understand. If the DES order expires, let's say, everything shuts down August 31st, September 1st, we're all back to normal, there's no state of emergency, et cetera, in effect technically, unless, well, and that's my question, can the council say, nonetheless, just as other cities have done, we'd like to extend this to December, we, we can override that 64-day temporary use, or can we?
Well, yes, you can, because like, like I said, if, if we are current, if the council is currently looking at changes to a, a code, but is not yet done with it yet, the city has a policy of not enforcing against that portion of the code. So whatever's out there now, let's just say the DES order, everything expires at the next city council meeting in August, you've, if you take the action tonight to look at changing the code to allow for these outdoor dining restaurants to be operational, we will not enforce the code against them, and they would be able to stay there until the council takes final action on that change in the code.
And I appreciate knowing that, because initially, as I read through this, my concern, generally, I mean, I served on the neighborhood council myself way back when, and I, I know what good work that they do, and I appreciate the input of the planning commission, but I was concerned that I didn't want this to expire, and, and we left holding the bag, that restaurants basically couldn't go forward because they, you know, of the timing. But if I understand that now, that if, if things go back to normal end of September, but because we are considering it, if we choose to have the neighborhood councils and the planning commission look at the design standards you come up with, it would potentially take it to December for us, but we would have their input, is that...
That's correct. We'll have planning commission and neighborhood council input, and every, every restaurant that's out there today would be able to remain out there.
And my calculations are, we have about 60, if 18 of 29 are using it, 62% of, of those who applied are current, are still using that, at least my mathematics.
That was about from a month ago when we took the survey.
Gotcha, okay, okay. And I, and I'll just make my comment, that originally I had thought, well, because I didn't want there to be a gap, I thought maybe we need to have it come back to us. But just because we're talking about design and what fits the look of our city and, and what, what is pedestrian-friendly and what, et cetera, I think there's lots of great ideas. I know the planning department will come up with great standards and suggestions, but personally, I think I would value the input of maybe what the neighborhood council and planning commission would have to say in this instance. And if it in no way impinges on the ability of our current restaurants to still have their outdoor dining facilities, I, I think my preference would be to say, let's let them comment on it and bring it back. But originally, when I first read that, that's not where I was going, but now that I understand we can do it that way, I, I think because it, basically what we're establishing, once this goes into place, is a, a new visual environment for our city, opportunities for any restaurants to change their space in some way, whether, and that's, I guess, my next question is, this was all came about, obviously, because of COVID, and those people, those restaurants that took advantage of it, it was done to help offset their financial losses. I understand that, and I want to commend our, our community for, our city for being one of the first to be the leaders, and other cities called up to ask us how we did it, because we were so good to put this in place. But I guess my question is, when, if and when this is done and put into place, we then, those will become design standards that can be used by anyone regardless, it, it is not tied in any way to financial need per se, correct? It's simply an opportunity to expand their seating. Is that accurate?
Yes, that, that is accurate. During COVID, we discovered that there wasn't a major parking issue once all these places went up, so we feel that, we, we currently have parking restrictions throughout these shopping centers where patios cannot expand today legally under non-COVID situations. And we're discovering that the parking reductions we're proposing will open up those opportunities. Currently, we have four restaurants that have come to us, two of them have applied for patio expansions, and part of the reasons why the others haven't is that the current parking codes do not allow for it, so we're making adjustments to allow these outdoor uses to come forward. The design guidelines Claudia's mentioning will help give them guidance to create a design that's kind of appropriate for the area versus code requirements, which are parking and setbacks that we're also changing, to potentially help these people out.
Gotcha, okay. Well, thank you, and thank you, Claudia, for that report. Really appreciate it. And so, anyway, you've heard what my, my preference is.
I have a, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
I, I want to go against you a little bit here. I'm thinking that what we're trying to do is help the restaurants, and going through this process, we should always be thinking what's, what's going to be the most benefit to them, and with, at a time where they're having a hard time getting employees and what have you. Normally, I would agree with you and say, let's go to the neighborhood council and the planning commissions, but I look at this as further recovery, and the more we can do to streamline it, the better it is for the restaurants, because a restaurant owner or their staff, manager, somebody is going to want to attend the meetings. And now we're taking time away from them doing business to put them through this big, long, which is going to draw out the process quite a ways, and it's ultimately going to come to us anyway. So why don't we, in this particular case, call it a COVID emergency or whatever, get to the point and get this done for the restaurant owner so they can start recovery quicker and stronger, and that's, that's the goal here.
Here's my question, because, and I, I agree, if, if this truly benefits the restaurant, my concern would be, right now, they have it in place. Once we put these in, these design elements, they're going to have to spend more money to comply with all of these things we're telling them to comply. To be very, to be very honest, I think allowing them to extend to December without having to come up with new design elements, new, et cetera, in many ways, it's, it's, it's allowing them longer to, to make more money and to not have to comply with, with new restrictions as far as, which is what's going to be built into this. They're going to be required to have certain barriers, certain architectural things, so I'm not, I, I understand your point, but I'm not convinced that truly it's going to help the businesses. I think for some restaurants, it will be more costly because we're asking them to sooner.
Having been a restaurant owner here in town, I can tell you, I have never seen a case where more government intervention saved anybody money. It just doesn't happen. Show me a case and I'll buy into it.
Well, either way, they're going to have the government standards, don't get, so they're, they're going to have to do that. I just, okay, but I'm, I think in this case, we're allowing them not to have government intervention, so we're allowing, so I think you're making my point.
Prepare a big intervention. It's all right.
Yeah, no, no, I, I...
It's just a matter of, having been in the business, I know I wouldn't want to go to multiple...
So your concern is having to go, for them having to go to the planning commission, having to go to the neighborhood councils, that that takes time away from their business?
Part of the concern, yeah. And it, and it makes it a typical government process overloaded with turns and intersections, and we have an opportunity to do it, do it quickly, work directly with planning, and be done.
If I may add a comment, Mayor and Councilmember Lister, I appreciate your comments. If anything, maybe it will help you. When we did our survey, we did ask the restaurants if they were okay, understanding that we're going to have to spend money, if they're okay with that, and they all, the ones that want to do it, they say absolutely. So they know they have to spend money and they don't mind, they want to get the outdoor dining.
And I think in just, in implementation, we will, we will allow what's there to stay there until the council takes final action, but even then, we probably want to grandfather in, or give, give them a timeframe in order to change what they have now into something more permanent. So it's going to take some time in the long run for them to convert what they have. Some of them, as you saw the photos, some of them is chain link funds. It's, it's, it's canopies, metal canopies, which is not what's envisioned for the final result. So there's going to be some changes, that's going to take time for these restaurants to adapt to. So it's, nothing's going to happen quickly.
You're also going to have to pay attention to what the state does, because if the state gets rid of its COVID exemptions for things, ABC will start coming into the restaurants and saying, you're not allowed to operate in this location unless the city has codified it.
So we, we have, we've been, I've been on calls with ABC and with the county, because the county is also a player in this as well. Now, it's going to, if, if a restaurant is going to expand outside, currently, they're, they are not paying a county fee of, I think, $50 a seat. That would go into effect. The county says... The county says, you know, it, when you expand and, and COVID is no longer, we may require you to pay that. So there is a, there is a price there. The governor has indicated, and A B C has actually indicated, that it appears as though they're going to direction to allow for that expanded alcohol serving on the, on a patio area. Now. Yeah, so we, we don't know for certain, but it, it appears to be going that direction. So there, there, there will be additional costs on the business owner as they go forward, including complying with what the, the final design guidelines were, and we want, want to make sure we give them time to do that. And that'll be as part of the report that comes back to you, as well as, is it, is it three months, is it six months? What's that timeline that we want to provide for, for the business owners?
Mayor, if I may make a comment?
Yes?
You know, I, I saw, and thank you for the report, first of all, thank you for the report and for reaching out to our business owners and asking them what their opinion was. That's, that's huge. That's collaboration, that's what we should be doing as a city. So thank you very much for reaching out to them and doing the survey, and so we can have some data upon which to make these policy choices. So thank you very much for that. My, my concern is, some of the things, you know, some of the cities that were mentioned, like Santa Barbara, Ventura, Santa Paula, like, they have a downtown area, you know, and so they have a corridor where you can shut off the street. And I, I've been to all those places, by the way, and I'm like, this is so cool, you know, we can hang out here and just walk around. And then you're parking on the arterial streets like in downtown Ventura, and that main thoroughfare that's, you know, full of restaurants and shops is, is thriving, like, you know, I was in Ventura, and I'm like, wow, this is like, you know, Santa Monica, this is really cool. And a lot of cities went in that direction, and, you know, I know Whittier, and a number of cities have done that, but they also have a, you know, a downtown, old town, whatever you want to call it, kind of area where you have all those facilities adjacent to each other, where you can, I was just in Sacramento and I saw that as well. It's like, there were all these canopies, and no one cared, by the way, that they were canopies, it was just a corridor of cool places to hang out. Here you can get dessert, here you can get appetizers, here you can get a drink, and so, you know, this is very popular in a lot of cities, but we don't have that. We don't have a downtown area. What we're seeing is, and I have some of the same concerns that you do, Mayor, and I'm glad you asked, you know, are they going to continue to go out and make inspections to make sure that it's safe? I do want to support our businesses, and, but I also want to make sure that it's safe. And a lot of times, like, some parking lots that I've gone into, we don't have, you know, our commercial areas, all our parking is in the front, and the businesses are in the back. There's a huge setback because of the big parking requirements that we have had in the city traditionally. And so, a lot of times when there's been this expansion of it, like, you can't see where the expansion is, you know, all of a sudden, it's like, you used to be able to drive, you know, through that area, and now there's this, oh, there's, you know, this, this restaurant is now, you know, taking over all these parking spaces. And it's not the parking that's an issue, it's the safety that I'm concerned about. Again, because it's not a corridor of restaurants where, you know, that whole street or that whole area is going to be shut down. And so that's, that's my concern. So my concern is just about safety, and I want to make sure that there's lighting, adequate lighting and striping or whatever that is going to go into the consideration of doing that, because they're not, because we don't have a corridor. I mean, I'm hoping that at one point we do on Topo or, you know, on Topo Street, that we have that corridor, but because we don't have that, those are my concerns. I'm concerned about safety issues, that if we, if we move this going forward, and those are the things that I'm asking you to consider as a staff, is to make sure that there's lighting or striping or pedestrian walkways, if there's going to be alcohol served, that people know, you know, where they can walk and where they can't walk, and where they can get to parking, you know, sidewalks or whatever. So I want us to be a destination, and I want to support the businesses in this endeavor, because we have some amazing restaurants here in the city, and I think this will greatly help them. But I also want to make sure that it's safe because we don't have a corridor. Does that make sense? So those are the things that I'm asking staff to consider in terms of including in, in that, you know, lighting at night, pedestrian pathways, shared parking spaces, you know, because it might be, hey, this is a cool place, it's open till ten now, and there's shared parking spaces there, or drop off pickup locations, like I said, lighting at night, but just so people are aware of, if we're going to, you know, have a moratorium on the temporary use permit enforcement, to make sure those safety precautions are in place. I, I, I just want to protect the city from liability and the restaurants, and protect the, the residents as well, while, while supporting the businesses. Is that something that we can do?
That'll be part of the, the whole future design, the ultimate design, is ensuring the safety of the public is, is always in, in consideration. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, may I make comments now?
I'm sorry, did he?
Yes, may I, may I make some comments now?
Sure.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, I didn't see her name on here.
I did, it says N Q. It's been there for a while.
It didn't come up online.
Oh, well, then yours is broken.
Well, give me yours.
Just kidding, thank you very much. Thank you very much for the, the report. I really enjoyed the fact that you included a lot of pictures of the designs that other areas are, are doing. There were a few that I have a preference for, but I'm going to leave it up to your expertise there. The timeframe, that is a concern, because I think the sooner we allow our restaurants to move forward, the better it will be. So my proposal would be to leave this in place for six months, which is what I think we're doing. And then my first instinct was to go to the neighborhood council also, but I believe you, our planning department, has enough expertise to, to do the designs, to make sure they're safe, to make sure they fit the design elements that we want and where they're at, and to be able to put that in, in a report quicker for us without having to go out. If you go out, if we go to the neighborhood council, we could, it could hold it up a little bit, saying, well, no, how about we want, you know, three trees instead of two or whatever, where, you know, when you get a lot of opinions, you're going to have a lot of, a lot of different choices. So I think I would like to leave that up to you to come back to us with your design elements. And I know the outdoor dining in Simi Valley is really enjoying it, and there are going to be times where it's not possible. We do occasionally get rain, maybe, but we do have wind, and, you know, and it does get cold a little bit. So having the ability for our restaurants to, to open, to continue to use what they have now, and to make them more attractive. I, I know some of them are using the chain link fence, I've been to, quite a few of them are, but looking at the different ways that, and I've been out to the Santa Barbara and, and up, up and down State Street, and Ventura is on Main Street, I have a branch right around the corner, and I've been there quite a bit. So I can see how attractive it could be. So that will be my consideration, is I think it's a great idea to let the planning department move forward with this.
So, well, I mean, I'm willing to make a motion then, but, unless Mike wants to say that thing, but, so what I'm hearing, based on the conversations there, is even though, is that I motion that we direct staff to continue processing development code text amendments and return to the city council in September twenty-twenty-one. So that's what I'm hearing, that there's interest in so doing. Do we need to add to that a stay of what's in place for six months regardless of when the D E, D E S order ends?
If you like, you certainly can, I mean.
That would be my thought.
You can, you can exercise that discretion.
I guess my, my only concern is, you know, that we, are we going to get input from the public, because I think they should have a say.
You have that, you have that right, it's discretionary right to decide whether or not you're going to enforce or not at this particular moment, as the city managers indicated.
No, I'm not, not for the moratorium on enforcement, I'm talking about when we actually set the standards, like, we're going to have a public hearing and everything, like.
That'll be by way of public hearing, yes.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, that the public has an opportunity to give input.
Public hearing here.
Public hearing here at, at state council, as opposed to the planning commission. That was a motion I made.
I'm going to second your motion.
Okay.
Okay, a motion and second? Call for the vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item nine A, city council member reports.
Okay, council member Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tuesday, June eighth, I attended the Oakmont grand opening here in Simi Valley over on Royal. The assisted care living center for seniors with the memory care facility is outstanding. The thing is beautiful, if you get a chance to go over there and, and take a look, and anybody out who's looking to go to, go put their loved ones in some unit like that, it's just, I can't say how outstanding that place is, it was gorgeous. Looked like a five-star hotel. On Saturday, June twelfth, I attended the Elks Lodge Flag Day Ceremony along with Councilmember Louvenos and Mayor Mashburn. Very nice ceremony, always, always appreciate the Elks putting that on, along with the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and their emblem club. Always great, great activity. On Monday, June fourteenth, I attended Council on Aging, I believe Councilmember Lister was on the Zoom meeting with me on that. Council on Aging is dark in July, but they'll be back after that. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lister?
Thank you. For, in June eighth through the eleventh, I actually was assisting with a youth, a church youth camp, and so I was not as available for city functions, but I want to mention that on, that our service project was conducted on June eleventh, where we installed some plants and beautiful fixtures at Strathern Park. And I would just want to thank the, the park and rec, for, for helping us allow that to be, be possible. It was an amazing experience for youth, and really, Strathern Park has some beautiful things happening there, and I'm grateful that it's being maintained and that we, things are opening up so people can all go and appreciate and enjoy that. On Monday, June the fourteenth, I did have the opportunity of attending the, I'll call it the Veterans Court Restoration at the Mall. That was with Mayor Protem Dede Kavanaugh, and also Mayor Keith Mashburn was in attendance and spoke there. It was a lovely Flag Day event at the mall, and I, I had heard from some constituents concerned because the veterans' flags had, or the armed services' flags appeared to have been taken down, but I understand a lot of that was due to wind damage. It was beautiful to have the mall restored and placed in position, and a special commendation to Paul Hofer, who was, who received the Order of Saint Maurice medallion at that event. It was just a lovely, lovely event. On Wednesday, June the sixteenth, also with Mayor Protem Dede Kavanaugh, we attended the Simi Valley Veterans Task Force, where actually they formed, they had their first official meeting, the Simi Valley Veterans Nonprofit Organization, that will be looking at exploring, having some type, some kind of a gathering place or facility for our veterans in our community. And, and so they articulated what the vision looks like, and they're still trying to figure out the path, but I wanted, officers were elected at that time, and I want to commend our Mayor Protem Dede Kavanaugh, who has agreed to be the treasurer in that instance. So thank you for stepping up to do that. Thursday, June four, June seventeenth, I appreciated my conversation with our C manager, Brian Gabler, always appreciate those conversations. On Friday, June the eighteenth, I did have the privilege of representing the city at ribbon-cutting grand opening for Two Girls Home Care. I just want to tell this, the community, or tell the community and our C council a little bit about this new business in our community, run by Maria, she is an immigrant from Peru, and just an amazing business she has built. And she started the business in her home, she moved to another location, and now she's opened this beautiful facility on Arranger. She employs at least twenty-two caregivers, she, and, and the name is for her, she's named for her two daughters, and that's why it's Two Girls Home Care, it's named for her daughters. But it truly was a wonderful day to see, and to see what they were doing there, and it's such a need in our community. And I met there, she even, she had in attendance certainly her employees, community members, and also some of her clients, and I just wanted to share with the council that I met Vincent Noel and his wife Carol. And I want to share that with you, because he, he was part of the formation committee of our city, on two of the committees, and I asked, and I gather, he somehow missed the fifty-year celebration. And he said, I heard about it after the fact, so I was able to give him a fifty-year pin. I want you to know that, I've, I was able to, to do that, and it was just delightful. I also learned that he was responsible for the naming of Pioneer Cemetery, when he sat on, on the, on the cemetery board, but anyway, it was just a, a lovely event to be there, and also to meet this, this wonderful gentleman who, who was so formative in our, in our city. On Saturday, June nineteenth, I appreciated that we now have a new federal holiday, Juneteenth, to celebrate truly the freedom and acknowledgement of the date that everyone in our country recognized that they were free and created equal. And so, a very poignant day, but I appreciated that that is now a federal holiday, and I really was aware of it too, because my bank was closed on the eighteenth for my business, anyway, at least who we do business banking with, so I don't know if yours was, DeeDee, but anyway, it is a federal holiday, so, anyway. So, but, but I do appreciate what it stands for, and I appreciate that there was bipartisan legislation that made, that put that into place, and that, I, I do appreciate that. And thank you to all the fathers in our world that we celebrated Happy Father's Day on June twentieth, it was a special day for the dads in my life, and appreciate all that they do. And so, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, council member Louvenos.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a hectic June for me, because it's the end of the school year, so for all the teachers, it was, it's been a crazy, crazy year. On Monday, I'm sorry, on, uh, let me see, on Friday, June eleventh, we had the graduation at my high school, so that, that's what I was busy doing. On Saturday, June twelfth, I too attended the Flag Day Ceremony at the Elks Lodge with Councilmember Judge and Mayor Mashburn, and I have to say, I, I recognize a lot of the Boy Scouts there, and I said, oh, gosh, I know why I know all those kids, those are, that's my daughter's Boy Scout troop. So I recognize them right away. So shout out to all the Boy Scouts who come and celebrate the Elks Lodge. My daughter has done that as a Girl Scout. My son has been there too, to retire flags. They have a wonderful pit there at the Elks Lodge where you can, they do flag retirement ceremonies, so if any of you have flags from Flag Day that are tattered, you never throw an American flag away in the trash, that, that's very disrespectful. You do retire it, you turn it into, you can turn it into Girl Scouts or Boy Scout troops, and they will properly retire the flag. There's a whole ceremony, you salute it, you, you know, give meaning to it, and then you burn the flag. So you never throw an American flag away. I just want to remind everyone for Flag Day about proper flag etiquette. And there's a lot of scouts that do flag retirement ceremonies at summer camps, at their Boy Scout and Girl Scout summer camps. I know Elaine knows, she's nodding her head. So if you have a tattered flag, and you're getting a new one for Fourth of July, or you got a new one for Flag Day, you have the old one, don't throw it away, make sure you retire it properly. On Saturday, June nineteenth, I attended the Black and Free Ventura County Family Juneteenth Event in Thousand Oaks. It was led by the same people who put on Joan Cartwright and a number of other entities, Eight O Five Resistance. It was the first time they had ever had a Juneteenth event in Thousand Oaks, and it was amazing. We had our first ever Juneteenth event here in Simi Valley last year, and the organizers of the event here in Simi Valley decided they wanted to support Thousand Oaks in their endeavors to have a Juneteenth event. It was wonderful, everyone was welcome, there was food, local vendors, there was, oh my gosh, entertainment, the DJ was really, really, really good, we were all dancing around, and it was free. It was a free event at the Thousand Oaks Civic Center, and it was open to anyone in Ventura County or outside of Ventura County as well. And I just want to remind everyone that, you know, Juneteenth is about making sure that the Black community has voting rights, that Black Lives Matter, and that we fight for reparations to make sure that there is equity within our Black community and supporting Black businesses. So I'm very excited about that, and that's the end of my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dede Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, June eighth, I also attended the grand opening at Oakmont Senior Living. Like Councilmember Judge said, it was a beautiful facility. I think the mayor and I have already chosen our rooms, so we're, we're ready to go. They also have a memory care facility on the backside and a beautiful courtyard in the middle. The, they were very, very nice, they're very excited to be here in Simi Valley, and it's a good addition to our business community. On Monday, June fourteenth, I also attended the Veterans Flag Day Ceremony at Simi Town Center. Councilmember Lister already mentioned that they honored a Korean War veteran with the, the Medal of Saint Maurice, which was wonderful to see. And they also honored all of our Vietnam veterans. There is a fifty-year pin from, for the end, the beginning of the Vietnam War officially. And so, not all veterans had received one yet, so there were a few that they gave that to, and then they called all Vietnam veterans onto the stage and recognized them and said, welcome home, and we were able to clap. That's a special meaning for me, both my uncles were both in Vietnam, and so it, it's really special to me to see them being recognized and thanked for their service when they weren't when they originally came home. And they, our veterans groups do a wonderful job. They, they put up all the new flags, we had, the P D was up there. They put up all the new flags, we had, the PD was up there. The only thing I have a complaint about the PD, when they called for all the police officers to come up there, two of them hid. Not a complaint, it was fun. But they also recognized, they kind of specialized in recognizing first responders. So, that was very nice to actually recognize EMTs, the hospital, the police, the fire. So, that also gave the community an opportunity to do that. And I think what, one of the best things about it was we were able to gather as a community and actually support each other and talk and recognize the, all the good things that have happened in our community during the bad times. So, I wanted to thank them for that. On Wednesday, June 16th, as councilmember Lister said, we had the Simi Valley Veterans Foundation, it's officially incorporated, waiting on nonprofit status. Officers, I don't know if we were selected or volunteered or just put our names down, one or the other, but we have a, we have a good board to start with. What I thought was funny is I thought some of the military groups would be more involved and they were like, no, we're too busy, we're too busy, you guys can go ahead. So, they'll be a part of the board, but they didn't necessarily want to take a leadership role at this point. So, hopefully we'll get it started and then they'll be able to take over. On Thursday, June 16th, or 17th, excuse me, we had the EDC General Board Meeting and we went over a lot of different things, but one of the big bring homes that I really wanted to mention was the EDC had commissioned a report on the profile for COVID-19, community business, nonprofit, and the worker impacts, informing an inclusive and equitable economic recovery for Ventura and Santa Barbara County. We contracted with Dr. Jemshie Demui at CLU. The draft is already ready, it's like 200 pages, so they're trying to consolidate it into a report, but that will be very helpful for all, for the county as a whole and for every single city in the county to utilize to see where our business groups are, where our nonprofits are, and where we can really help the most. So, I was really happy to see that. I hope everyone had a Happy Father's Day. I have two special things, I just want to wish my mother a happy 80th birthday on Wednesday. So, we celebrated on Friday, but our actual birthday is this Wednesday, so happy birthday, Mom. She never watches, she shouldn't stay up this late, but that's okay. And then, my final thing, my favorite thing is, always a Highlander. The Royal High School Highlanders Baseball, Boys Baseball Team won their first ever CIF Section Championship, Southern Section Championship on Saturday. So, congratulations to Coach May, who's been there 32 seasons, this is his first win, and all the young men on that team. I watched it, it was live streamed, it was great, it was exciting, so congrats to them and good luck on their next game. So, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, I started off Tuesday, June 8th, with the Economic Development Executive Action Committee and we're making progress and between the members from the city and the members from the chamber, they're coming up with a method of making visits to the businesses in our community, not only industrial, but also retail, both. And so, that's moving forward. On the same day, I attended the mayor's roundtable where all mayors got together Zoom-wise through the Board of Realtors and we had a bank of questions that we answered. And it was, it was kind of fun because we find that many of the issues that face our city face all cities around us. And it was a good interaction and made some new friends and look forward to seeing those mayors again in the near future. Then I went to the Oakmont Grand Opening and boy, slid in there just in time, thank you everybody for stalling. And that was an extremely nice grand opening. All the employees were there, everybody was so gracious and kind and DeeDee did give me a tour of her room, just a tour of the, her room that she rented. On Thursday, June 10th, had a meeting with Congressman Mike Garcia to discuss appropriations and other matters that matter to our city and he was very gracious and brought his chief, I think, chief aide?
Division Chief.
Division Chief aide, the person that is here in Simi Valley full-time. And we had discussions and learned that he's working diligently on getting us funds for the reconstruction of the Sequoia Train Crossing. And I think it's great to point out that once that train crossing is, been modernized, then we're going to be a silent city and that's where the train will come through our city and not have to honk its horn. However, I'm going to pay the engineers, all of them, aside, just to honk the horn when they go by Mike Judge's house. Just, I don't want him to miss those horns. On Saturday, June 12th, went, like the others here, went to the Elks Lodge Flag Ceremony and typical of each year, it's a very nice ceremony where they properly retire U.S. flags. It was a very nice event. And then, I too attended the June 14th, BFW National Flag Day Event at the Town Center and saw all of the new flags and wow, there's a bunch of flags. And I'll tell you what was really great is watching the Army and Marines and Navy and Air Force banter and do other cat calls and what have you, all in good fun, but it was entertaining as heck. I met with some representatives from the KB Homes regarding some changes they want to make on one of their developments. Nothing was set in concrete, but there was some discussion. With that, let's see, I too have to say congratulations to the Highlanders for their baseball win. That's great, great for Simi Valley. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to the United States of America, their new holiday in honor of Juneteenth, a worthy recognition and happy that that occurred. Sunday, June 20th was Father's Day and I think it's important that fathers everywhere understand how important they are and how thankful many, many, many of us are that we had fathers that took care of us and helped mom raise us. And that was a great day, it was a nice day and thank you fathers for all the work that you folks do. And that's my report. Okay, next up is 9B.
Mayor?
9A. 9B, 9B, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I have two requests for item 9B. The first one is, which I had stated earlier, is the request for the rainbow lights to be lit up for the remainder of the month. Here at the city, obviously, we heard from residents that it means a lot to them to be validated in that way and to be recognized, so I'm glad that we had so many residents that emailed and called about how much that means to them. So, that's my first 9B request, is for the rainbow lights to continue to be lit up for the remainder of the month, which is 10, nine or 10 days left.
What, I have a question, I think it's going to be for the city attorney, is, this is for a future agenda item, there's no future meeting until 26 and it's not on the agenda, so to discuss this is probably not appropriate.
I would agree, I was actually just reading 9B and becoming familiar with it. It states here, item gives the mayor, chair, city council members, directors the opportunity to request items to be placed on a future city council agenda for consideration or discussion. So, we don't have anything, a future agenda won't be ready until July 26th, so you're correct, Mayor.
So.
Okay. My second request is for next year.
For what?
For next year, for June to be declared Immigrant Heritage Month. I'd like that to be a resolution, I don't know if everyone is aware, that June is Immigrant Heritage Month and we owe a lot to many of the immigrants in our community who are employees, business owners, workers here, so I would like for next, I know it's too late this year, but for next year, to have a resolution declaring June as Immigrant Heritage Month.
Well, that would be each of us, right? We're all immigrants. We came from somewhere.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't know that it needs to be an agenda item or if the city manager can handle it, but I've received some comments regarding the overgrowth of mustard in the watershed area of the Arroyo at Madera. And is it county or us that's supposed to be maintaining that?
That would be county, so we'd be more than happy to reach out to the Watershed Protection District and let them know. There tends to be a battle between watershed and some of the other agencies about how much cleaning should really be happening in the Arroyo, so, but we will, we'll communicate that to them.
Okay, thank you, that's kind of what I thought.
Mayor, I have one more request. Are we moving forward, because residents have been asking, with the July 4th, is that happening, the July 4th fireworks?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and I just want to bring it up because for all the people that are, you know, shooting off illegal fireworks, we are going to have a 4th of July celebration, you do not need to shoot off your own fireworks, right? Because we're going to have a celebration on 4th of July at the park, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, just want to let everybody know.
Illegal fireworks.
In Ventura County, all fireworks, with the exception of the city of Fillmore, is, are illegal. There are no legal fireworks for personal use.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted that reiterated, especially for us pet owners.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big deal, thank you.
I guess, it goes without saying, that'll be a trying time for the police department. Motion to adjourn. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of George R. Baucher II and he was the father of Angelica Yagiri, who works in the city clerk's office. So, we will send out the appropriate letter and certificate remembering George. And I think that's it. With that, meeting's adjourned.